Crashes because
It is definitely not heat one in this.
10,000 people are watching.
Yeah, it's definitely not heat one.
Yeah, I walked in, I was like, I would have worn pants. But apparently, earlier today, it was.
Hey Jim?
You think?
Bob just sent an email, he wants to participate remotely.
Maybe one-fifth responses from parents as I did from the daily. Five, six, seven.
Bob's not coming.
Yes. He's participating remotely.
Hello Bobby.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna be a hypocritical. What is voted?
I'm gonna win both. I thought it was important that we.
Three. Does that mean you need more time now Jim, or are you good still?
No, you can continue.
Alright. Please rise and join us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to this special meeting of the Attleboro School Committee of Wednesday, August 8th, 2020. This meeting is being electronically recorded. Just start with a little kind of notice of where we are, where this is our first meeting back in person in some time. We are meeting at Wam Sada Elementary, uh, Wam Sada Middle School, excuse me, as it provides us with the ability to tape the, tape the meeting for the public, allow public access through Zoom, and allows us to remain 10 feet apart so that we can comply with regulations and not have to wear masks throughout the meeting. I want to thank all of you watching at home and participating at home for, for attending, as I know this is a, a meeting people have been waiting for for some time. With that, I'm going to start tonight with our business agenda item, early voting and additional polling location for, for Attleboro elections. For that, I'll call up Cheryl Perry from the Attleboro Election Office.
Hello, thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming.
So due to space restrictions with COVID-19, we lost a couple of our polling locations. And I'm here representing the Elections Office on seeing if we could use a few of the schools for both elections and including early voting. So St. John's is our Ward 3 location and we used the Parish Center and due to space with their ministries, they need to take it back right now. So we were looking for possibly to use Willett School for Ward 3, which is in the District Ward 3. Also, early voting, in the past, we've always had at City Hall. Size restrictions, again, we have a limit of 23 people in the Council Chambers area, including the hallway. And we have nine, nine workers for that day. So we wouldn't be able to have too many voters in there. So we were looking to possibly use Thatcher School for that, which is close by to City Hall, closer to the center. And that would be for the period August 22nd through August 28th. Includes that Saturday and Sunday. And lastly, La Salette Shrine, right now houses our Ward 5, excuse me, Wards 4 and 5. And we need to separate them due to size restrictions. So we'd like to move Ward 5 to Thatcher School.
And this
For election dates.
The, um, this is for the primary September 1st?
Yes, the primary, the election dates would be September 1st and November 3rd presidential.
Right, thank you. Questions, Mr. Domenici?
Yes, thank you for being here tonight. My question is, are these temporary losses of space due to COVID-19 and other things going on, or is this going to be, you know, point forward that we have to think about this?
We're asking for this for, just for COVID-19 reasons, that's how it was laid out to us as far as with St. John's, that they need the space because of COVID-19, so right, I'm here today just for this year.
Okay, that, that's, I just wanted to
Yeah.
get that specification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Storrs?
More for the administration, if we were to allow this, we, you know, knowing some of these schools, Thatcher, two wards at Thatcher, the amount of parking would 236. Oh, wait, so okay, Ward 5 at Thatcher, what was the previous thing that you talked, you said Ward 3 at Willett, then you said something else? Oh, the early voting, so okay, now I understand. But still, um, would we close the schools on those days? Other than November 3rd?
In the calendar that we'll be considering later in the meeting, there will be no students on either of those days. Or during the early voting for the primary?
The 22nd through the 20th.
Right, because it won't be school on September 1st probably, that, we already don't have school on Election Day. And there won't be school in, um, assuming the calendar gets adopted, there won't be school on the dates of early voting leading up to the primary. So really, the I imagine the only concerning time is the early voting for the general election in November.
Correct.
Is that on the table for tonight?
What is?
Early voting for November, or is only for the primary?
It's, you know, at this point, we're, we're, it's three weeks away, so we're really just concentrating on the primary right now. We will be dealing with that later though.
So, but tonight, we could take, we could take up tonight, um, early voting for the primary and the elections for the primary? As well as the Election Day for Willett and Thatcher?
Yeah.
And leave the early voting on, um, the general election until we have a better idea of what school's gonna look like at that time?
That'd be good.
Mr. Storrs?
I was actually talking, when we were doing a tour of the schools, we ran into one of the election officials. And I was talking to him about this. It was confused, I know, I know right now this is more of an emergency situation, so you're focused on this. It was confusing to me to see Ward 2's voting, when Good News Bible said no more there, to be moved into Ward 3, because I know normally we want to keep it in the same ward. It almost seems that, why wouldn't we try to put Ward 3 in, in the place where Ward 2 is voting right now in Ward 3? And maybe utilize Brennan or Studley for Ward 2. But maybe right now, this is more of an emergency situation, but maybe that's something we could think about?
Yeah.
So just, Brennan is, is complicated by the roof project.
Maybe Studley would be the better, if that was an option.
I think from a logistics perspective, in terms of parking especially, we thought that the other schools were a better choice for this particular situation.
Okay. And again, it's just for, effectively, the August 22nd and 28th is not an issue, because it'll only be staff. And the September 1st is not an issue, because we're delaying the start. And the November 3rd, so really, it's, we were already closing down on November 3rd anyways. So this really doesn't impact our students.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Does the administration have a, um, comment or recommendation on this?
Well, as the administration has, uh, said all along, that we recognize that the schools belong to the community and we will do everything in our power to support the needs of the community on Election Day. And it's really, you know, we defer to the judgment of the committee who gets to decide how we use our buildings.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know, can you hear me okay if I?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know, I believe it was last year, there is a request to use Wam Sada, and I believe that was for Ward 5, if memory serves me correctly. And I believe, um, Mr. Sawyer, you may have already answered this question for me. I was wondering why Thatcher versus Wam Sada was being requested. Is it due to the complications with the roof, or the considerations with the roof project?
They did visit Wam Sada, um, yesterday or today, they did visit Wam Sada. I think we thought Thatcher was just a better fit.
Okay.
Yeah, because Thatcher's in Ward 5, and I believe Wam Sada was in Ward 4. And we wanted to keep Ward 5 on a route where it was closer to the city for people, for transportation wise. We thought it'd be easier for Ward 5 residents within the city limits to get to Thatcher versus Wam Sada, bus routes and so forth.
Sure, sure, thank you very much, I appreciate your answer.
Mr. Gettys, did you have a question?
No, I was just showing you the
Okay, Mr. Storrs?
Thank you. So, I just want to verify, after we get through this year, where the plan would not be to come back to us and ask this to be continued in the future, because then it starts impacting students. Right now, what you're presenting is not going to impact the students in any way, so I don't have a problem with it, I think it's a great thing. But the moment it starts impacting students and the end of the school year has to be pushed back, then, then I start having problems. So, I don't have a problem with this, but I'm asking, will you be coming to us in the future, asking for this to continue?
At this time, we're here just for these two elections.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think, you know, not to speak for the Election Commission, but usually, I mean, I think what really starts to, would cause problems is the early voting, which is multiple days, but if that can be held at City Hall normally, which I would assume would be the better place anyway, then the larger issue hopefully isn't something that is a recurring, recurring issue. Any other questions or comments? Alright, at this time, then I would entertain a motion, um, to allow or to utilize Willett Elementary School for Ward 3 voting on 9/1 and on, in the November date as well. Thatcher Elementary School on, uh, 9/1 and on the general election in November. And also Thatcher Elementary School for early voting for the primary, which is from August 22nd through August 28th.
To move.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gettys?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so that, that is approved, and I know, I should realize that, you know, we may need to meet again to discuss the November early voting, but this at least hopefully gets you what you need, so the notice is going to go out to the community.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda tonight is our report on the reopening of schools. And just as, um, just to kind of set the stage a little bit here, there are really two separate issues with the reopening of schools that we'll be addressing tonight. The first is we have to approve the three plans that have been presented to us by the administration for the three different possibilities, which are remote learning, hybrid learning, or in-person with restrictions. So we'll be discussing and voting on those plans, not voting on whether or not that will be how we start the year. And then secondly, after that's been done, we'll ask the administration for their recommendation on how we will start the year at each level. And then we will discuss and vote on that. For that, I'll turn it over to the administration, Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Chairman Withers. You have that exactly right, we have two things, two pieces of business that we need the committee's support on tonight, so that we can complete what the state has asked of us. And I should just pull back to say that, you know, that the state asked basically three things of districts back in July. And the first was, we needed to assess the feasibility of operating our district in, in-person learning under restrictions as set, in the guidance set by the state. You know, these were the rules of three feet, distancing in our classrooms, and so forth and so on. And, um, upon figuring that out, they then wanted us to develop plans for the three models for learning that they, they had the entire state prepare. So the, the first is in-person with restrictions, which is what we did the feasibility study for. The second is hybrid, uh, which is a mix of remote and in-person. And then the last one is remote. That, um, and then the third thing, as you said, is then we have to make a decision about where we plan to start as a district. So, you know, we, the, the three components of this, of this task were the feasibility, the plans, and then the decision about a starting place. In terms of the feasibility for the district, uh, there's, there's sort of two elements to it. First is just, you know, straight math. If you have so many square footage, and you have so many students at such a distance, you know, how many can you fit them in? And then you have to take the next step, which is dig a little bit deeper and say, you know, does that math actually result in something that it works? Because, um, as many of you know, we have some very odd spaces in the district. We have classrooms that are shaped in such a way that like, yes, you know, by a formula, you should be able to fit X number of kids in this room. But when you actually put the desks in, do they all fit? And so, you know, over several weeks, uh, working with building administrations and teams of teachers, you know, we reached the conclusion that in terms of just feasibility of in-person learning, we can meet the guidance for our, uh, our eight schools at the elementary and middle school levels. At the high school however, we have real reason to doubt whether we can meet the guidance. The, the, there's enough square footage in the high school, technically speaking, but the spaces are too small in many places. And as you well know, we have high class sizes at the high school in particular. And so, the combination of not enough staff with too many small spaces makes the, the prospect of fitting everybody in, um, very doubtful. Now, I can't say definitively that it's impossible. And, you know, one of the variables here is how many kids aren't coming, um, because they're choosing to stay home remote. So, uh, you know, it would be, I would be misleading the committee if I said that it's an impossibility. But based on our best estimates and based on what we think is, um, the spirit of what the guidance is trying to accomplish, which is to keep everybody safe. You know, one of the things in the guidance is that we should cohort children as much as possible, and Mr. Regan will talk a little bit about that when she dives into the plans. But, you know, cohorting is a thing that is not really possible at the high school level, right? Kids can't stay in one room and have a, a, a different teacher come in for each period, right? Different kids need different things, and the, the high school offers a whole different range of subjects, and so the kids have to move around. And then that movement within the building, um, you have to make sure that that's done safely. And so for a, a whole host of reasons, um, and, you know, obviously, high school kids are the, our largest students. And, um, all the research says that, you know, this, you know, at the size of a kid actually helps, you know, makes it, it, it makes a difference in terms of how susceptible they are. So, for all these reasons, um, in terms of feasibility, we do not think that we can say that we can safely meet it, meet the guidelines for the high school, but we technically can, K to A. And I say technically, because, um, you know, built into that are assumptions about the fact that there will be some students who don't come. So, you know, the closer the number would get to zero kids choosing to do remote, which we know is not going to be zero, but the closer you get to zero, the more the assertion that we can do it becomes untenable. So, you know, based on assumptions about how many people won't be here, uh, we believe we can fit people in in-person, right? So it's, it's a, a technical possibility. So that was step one of the, of the, of the, of the project, and that was our, our findings through that work. So the next was to develop plans. And in a moment, Mr. Regan is going to dive in and give you an overview, and I'm sure there are a lot of questions about the details in those plans. But the point I want to make is that, and I think this was lost in the way that, um, the state framed this and the way people thought about it. The three plans, while we do have to choose which one to start in, it is not set up as we're going to choose one of these things for the year. The idea is that we had to develop plans for all three modes, because based on the, the conditions at any one moment, we might have to move from one particular mode of instruction to another. And so, really, you have to think of those three plans as a continuum of one thing, right? The Attleboro Public Schools have plans for, you know, delivering education under COVID in this school year. These three plans represent three different ways we would accomplish that, given conditions, right? In, um, one set of conditions, we feel confident enough that we can bring kids in and, and do it in-person with restrictions as set by the guidance. Another is that halfway measure is that we do hybrid, which then reduces the number of kids that are in the building, which certainly makes them safer. And then the last would be remote, right, which is, which everyone's home and is obviously on that continuum, the safest of the three choices that we have. So, really what families are facing is that, no matter what we choose as a starting place, at any moment, we might have to change from one mode to another. Or we might choose to change because conditions feel, make us feel like it would be the appropriate thing to do. Because at the heart of this, we all believe that what's best for kids is to be in school, right? The, the best possible outcome is if we could deliver school the way we did before March 13th. And the closer we can get to that, the better that would be for children. I mean, that's, you know, I, I think baked into all of our assumptions. The question is, how close can we get that under certain conditions to make things safe? And so, the plans represent really detailed, uh, thinking that are building specific, right? These were created by teams of administrators and teachers. We invited basically the entire teaching staff to participate in these, and in some of our schools, we had very, very, very large committees working through what will life look like in these three different modes. And the fact that the most challenging mode in terms of safety is obviously in-person, right? I think it got a lot of attention, uh, because those were the thorniest problems, right? It's, you know, when you start, when you're coming up with a plan for remote learning, there's certainly all kinds of pedagogical decisions to be made that are important. But in terms of how do you run a day, that's pretty simple, right? So it's because the in-person day is the most challenging in many ways, that I think that it got so much attention. And that there was a misperception that, um, there was sort of, uh, a, a bias towards any one particular mode, right? Always, we've been trying to prepare for all three, because in all likelihood, you know, we might have to use all three. And so all three plans need to be safe, uh, safe and sound and, you know, educationally valid. And, you know, Ms. Regan will, uh, walk you through that, and I, I think we can take some pride in the work that's been done. But the final thing is, is that in the end, we have to choose a starting place, right? We're going to have a start of school, and that's one of the things that we have to, to determine. But whatever day that is, you know, we're all going to come, and it's going to be one of the three. And as you make your choice this evening as to where, which one we're going to start with, obviously, we've talked about on multiple occasions, but I'll say it again, whatever we do tonight is our best guess, because as we have seen, things can change pretty quickly, you know, in, in, in ways that we don't anticipate. I, I'll say personally, right? I had plans this weekend to be with family that, you know, got, uh, you know, changed by the fact that, you know, the, the governor, without any warning, changed the, the travel restrictions on going to Rhode Island. So, um, you know, we all have to understand that, uh, we have to submit something to the state, we have to start planning for one of them, right? And so the decision we make tonight will be, um, what we planned for, but the conditions might in the end, uh, change whatever it is that we decide. But in making those decisions, um, I think there are a couple of things that you, you need to think through. And, and, and measure, you know, out the various components of the decision, because it's, I don't think it's a straightforward one. I think this is a very, very challenging, um, decision to make, and I think that there are a lot of things to weigh through. So, one is that feasibility piece. You know, is it technically possible to do, um, what we're asked, what we're being asked to do under that mode? So, um, you know, I've, I've answered that question, but that is a component of it. And it certainly plays a role in how, what we just do about the high school. The second one is about safety, we have to think about the safety of our, of our students, and there's two parts to that. One is the inherent safety of the mode, right? So, I, I think we have to be clear, remote is safest, right? Staying home is safer than coming to school when you have a pandemic. Hybrid is safer than in-person. That's, that, there is a continuum there, and that's true, but that whole continuum exists in a larger context of how prevalent is transmission of the virus in our community. And this is a point I really want to make to people. We've got to make, this is a local decision, there's a reason why Massachusetts, we have local control, because that's what's best, um, for making decisions that are particular to us. And we have to make these things in light of what's true for us. So, I know it's scary when we watch the news and see that, you know, there, the numbers are spiking in particular places. But, you know, the positivity rate in Attleboro remains just under 2%. And so, those are the kinds of numbers that we have to figure on. And so, you know, what's safest, yes, you know, never leaving a house is safer, but, um, we all take risks every day. So you have to weigh what benefits there are, uh, to extra safety, and what you give up by, um, you know, being safest. And I think that there's a real thing to be weighed there, but there is no question that, um, as the virus is spreading, you know, safety is, is part of how we would make this decision. Another part of it, which I have to be honest, we try not to talk a lot about as a school district, um, is, is simply just management, right? You know, every day, you go to a building, there's a, a couple of administrators in the building, and then there's, you know, some number of teachers, which is, you know, greatly outnumbers them, and then some number of students which greatly outnumber them. So, you know, even at our smaller schools, you know, you have 500 people, um, who show up and have to, you have to coordinate their movements and make sure everyone's in the right place and make all of that work. And, you know, this is not a new concept, so as a district, we're pretty good at running a school, running school on a daily basis in a way that we don't really think about management concerns. We try to focus on things that are more important. But under these conditions, especially some of the, the restrictions that we have to worry about, management becomes a consideration. You know, I mean, this meeting right here, I mean, when we think about the extra efforts we had to put in to be able to meet in person tonight, uh, safely, which, you know, we are doing, that was, you know, a real change of our, of, of the way we do business, and required extra effort and extra consideration, and a lot more planning to make this happen. Well, school under COVID is the same way, and so, um, the plans have, um, different, you know, challenges to them. And again, not too different from the safety one. You know, remote is easier to manage. In-person is by far the most challenging, because of the number of students that you're trying to keep at distance in a day. And hybrid, um, is in many ways, uh, significantly easier to manage as a district than, uh, in-person is. Of course, I'm sure there are families at home listening to this saying, well, there are other things to consider too, and that's the next thing that obviously we have to weigh as well, is the impact of this decision on other things. And, you know, I want to be very clear, if you look at the mission of the Attleboro Public Schools, it, it doesn't say, um, anything other than to, to educate kids, right? We're, we're here, we're an educational institution, we're here to educate, and we have to focus on, on education. But it would be insensitive to the families we serve to not think about the way that our decisions will impact the lives of families, right? That is a very serious consideration that has to be factored into this. And so, while, you know, as educators, we will tell you the truth about what we think about the education, about the management, about these other factors, the community's needs and the community's wants are ultimately what we're going to answer to. Um, and we are prepared to do what has to be done, because the impact of these decisions is significant on families. And we recognize that and appreciate that, and we understand that that has to be, to be weighed here. And it's not just about, um, who's going to be home with the kids, which is obviously the most significant piece of this, there are other considerations too, right? You know, as a district that has significant poverty, uh, we often talk about how, you know, there are many kids for whom school is the most stable place for them. And, you know, you know, when we aren't here for them, you know, that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a problem for the larger picture, both as our ability to educate them, um, and for what ultimately is good for the community. So, um, that is a, that is a factor that certainly I, I know is weighing heavy on everyone's mind, and it should be a part of that decision. And then lastly, you know, the educational piece, right? What's best in terms of our ability to educate kids? So, um, as you hear about the plans, as you ask questions and get answers to those questions, I hope that you'll remember that, you know, in making, in weighing your choices, um, those are all aspects of the choice that you, you really have to weigh through and try to find what balance is best, um, for the, the children of Attleboro. And, um, I have to say, I don't think there is a right answer here, I think that, um, you know, ultimately, uh, different people might come up with, with, with different choices. So, as a committee, um, you know, you're going to have to figure out, uh, from your perspective, uh, what that right balance is. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Regan.
Before, Ms. Regan, before you start, does anyone have any questions about, kind of?
Before Ms. Regan, before you start, does anyone have any questions about kind of the general overview provided by the superintendent? I don't want to get into any specifics of the plans or choices, but as to the overview, Mr. Domenici?
Thank you, Chairman. And Dave, thank you. And I'll probably say thank you quite a bit tonight. Just one question, Chairman, and it's about, I know tonight we will, we will vote, and I I we're aware of the process, but something you had mentioned kind of resonates with me because we have to vote on all the plans that they're approved to submit to DESI because we could fluctuate in and out of them. And so my question is, is that going to be our vote every time? You know, we're voting now to how to start the school. Are we gonna have to meet to vote if we have to make a shift, you know, one way or the other?
So I I don't think that the guidance from DESI is clear on that. The commissioner did speak to this issue and said that he really recommends that superintendents don't go out on a limb and do things that aren't in line with what their their school committees would choose to do. So I I think there's a couple of things that we can talk about, maybe, and one of them in particular a little bit later. But I would say that I I do think that the district currently is 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 organized in such that if we feel like there is a need to shift the district to, say, remote because there is emergent situations, I I do think it's well within the powers that I already have to to make that decision. I think where we would talk about coming in for a vote before we make a change is if we were shifting for other reasons other than an emergency.
And that's what I was, that's where I was kind of going with that. I absolutely agree with you that, you know, you are in the best position if we had to meet, you know, if we start the year off in something other than remote and we have to go to remote, and it might not even be your decision. Like, like you said, that could come from a, it was kind of the other way. If we ultimately find ourselves phasing some way, hybrid to in-person or remote to hybrid, is that a decision we have to make? Is that is that something that you would present to us and say, we think it's time to ask you to consider this, and do we have to vote on it? And I don't know that answer, so I I'm generally, I figured I'd ask now.
I hope it's not perceived as cowardice, but I'd prefer to.
I think if we're making a decision that's not based on emergency situations that are being handed down by the state, then the school committee should meet and hear the administration's recommendations on why we should go from in-person with the with restrictions to hybrid or from remote to hybrid. You know, if we're making changes like that, I think that's a decision we should make. But, you know, the real possibility of like what happened in the spring where there's, you know, the need to make a quick change for emergency situations, then I think that's within the superintendent's power.
And I would agree, Chairman, and and thank, I know you're going there, Jim. I just, this is unprecedented, so I had to ask.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good question. Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Storrs. First, I do want to say, you know, great job to the administration and the staff members who volunteered and was part of the the committees. You know, a lot of work obviously went into this preliminary reopening plan. You know, as far as the plans themselves, I see a lot of thought went into it, so I very much appreciate everything that was done for this. As far as later on tonight, when we make our decision, you know, a lot of it comes down to we have limited resources. We can't go hire hundreds of new teachers. We can't go get, you know, dozens of new school buses. We we have limited funding. We're not going to be getting much more funding. Still, do we even know right now at this point what the governor's going to give us? So the point is, we still don't know what our funding is going to be next month, which is beyond crazy. But the point being, it's all limited resources. You know, when we vote, a lot of, from my point of view, a lot of it is dependent on what we choose at each level. We we don't necessarily have to pick the same thing for the high school as we do for the middle school as we do for the elementary. And I think it's important to have that discussion. We could do different things. One could be full remote. Older students are more mature, more able to take care of themselves, more able to get things done. So that is a conversation that could be had. I know that you and I talked earlier today, Mr. Storrs, so I know that you've looked at these things, and I, again, I appreciate that. But I did want to say that we do have limited resources, and the decision that we have to make has to be based on those limited resources.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I, when we get to that point in the meeting, my plan is to ask the administration for recommendations at each of the three levels and then for this committee to vote as to their choice on each of the three levels. And take those separately. That's not to say that, you know, we won't choose the same thing for each or that we will, but we, you know, I think you're right in that, you know, different ages, different concerns, different, so they'll be considered separately.
The thing is, the decision that we make at the high school might affect our ability on what we want to vote for at the other levels. For example, if we were full remote at the high school, I'm not saying that's even on the table, but if it was, if we were full remote at the high school, it might enable us to be full in-person at the other levels. The point is, one affects the other. We only have so many buses. We need to be able to utilize those resources to be able to safely get students to school. So that's where it gets, becomes a little bit more difficult in your chair is is how to handle that discussion.
All right, Ms. Regan. Ms. Regan?
Okay. Can we pull up the presentation, please? While they're pulling that up, before we get started, I just want to thank everyone that participated in all of the reopening committees. Before we get started, I just want to thank everyone that participated in the reopening committees. Can everyone hear me okay? I hope so. We value their time and know that there was a lot of work that was done behind the scenes. So just thank you so much. As the slide says, these are district preliminary reopening plans, and we are calling them that because we recognize that there are still a lot of details within each of the plans that need to be talked out and discussed. And so as we continue to work over the next couple of weeks before we reopen schools, we know that there are a lot of things that still need to be determined. So just wanted to let you know that we're still a work in progress. Thank you. So as Superintendent Sawyer stated beforehand, we were directed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI, to put together a plan that included three models of learning. And so with the goal in mind being to bring back as many students as safely as we possibly could. And so what we have done is created a plan where we think we'd be able to fluidly transition students between each one of those models. And you can see, it's hard to see on the slide, but you can see how it's listed there. Next slide, please. DESI has also provided us with some very specific health and safety guidance, and many of the items that you see up on that slide right now are things that we typically do every day in our daily lives right now because of the pandemic. But the one piece that is very specific to education is the stable cohorting. And so what that means is that students are in this, are they're within the same group the entire day with an adult or a couple adults throughout the entire day. The reason for this is so that we're limiting transitions between the building and limiting interaction between students visiting with other cohorts of students throughout the Next slide, please. So as we talked about before, there were teams of teachers that met throughout the district and talked specifically about their building layouts and their campuses because each of them was very unique and specific to how they do their arrival and dismissal, how they go to lunch every day. And so each team of teachers really worked through all of the different pieces that were associated with that. Also, looking at, through our feasibility study that Superintendent Sawyer spoke about earlier, when we were looking at all of the classrooms, the way that we do learning here in Attleboro is usually around a table like this, with students given the opportunity to talk to each other and collaborate and learn from each other. However, in this situation, we realized that we needed to purchase desks. And so we had to purchase about 2,000 desks so that students could remain socially distant in the classroom at six feet apart. And so that was one of the things we realized. The other piece is that we're still investigating the purchase for Plexiglas barriers so that we can have small group instruction with classroom teachers at the younger levels and some of the upper elementary as well. We recognize that we still need to have some direct teacher interaction with students around a table. Next slide, please. So the hybrid learning model. So the purpose of the hybrid model is to reduce the cohort size by 50%. And so this provides both in-person instruction as well as remote instruction, but it's on a fixed schedule. So there are two cohorts. Cohort A is in-person on Monday and Thursday, and Cohort B is in-person on Tuesday and Friday. So some of the specific guidance that we we received from the Department of Education also said that we were required to take daily attendance. So we'll be taking daily attendance with students both in-person and at home daily. And we will also be really making sure that the students that are in front of us on that in-person day receive our undivided attention and focus on that day. And the students that are home will be working on the independent skills and practicing the instruction that the teacher delivered the day before.
Ms. Regan, if I if I can, just because seeing this slide and the last one, I've started to, you know, have a couple of questions pop in my head. But I think some of the questions apply to multiple or, you know, two or all of the different scenarios. So I just want, for the committee's benefit, I just want to say, why don't we wait until the plans are laid out and then we can ask the questions? Because I think a lot of the questions will apply to to multiple parts of the plan. So just to clarify so that, I assume other people are having questions pop up as well?
My question specifically to that.
That slide or that plan?
Yeah, that slide.
That slide? Okay.
Goodbye. Can we put that slide back up? So the Wednesday, that's the one day where no, no students are in the in the schools. What's the, what's going to happen on that Wednesday?
On that day, teachers will be doing small group remote instruction. And then they'll be planning together in in the afternoon.
What's the plan for cleaning in the classrooms?
So I'm sure Mr. Fratato will be able to speak to this more specifically than I, but the the idea that we would be clean, I mean, we will be cleaning every day, all day. And Wednesday will just give us another opportunity for that, but I'll hand it over to Mr. Fratato.
So before, let me, let me preface. So the reason is this, you know, per CDC, you need more than 24 hours of time for the virus to no longer be an issue. By having Cohort A on a Monday and then Cohort B on a Tuesday, you don't have enough time to, for that to happen. Not saying that cleaning couldn't happen to take that into account, but it almost seems like it would make more sense. Maybe I'm wrong. And I understand that there are other benefits to doing what the plan is. But if Cohort A came in on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday would be an off day which would allow cleaning, and then Cohort B would be on Thursday, Friday, the cleaning would be more possible. So that's just something to think about?
Sure. Yeah, and I just wanted to kind of follow up on things that the superintendent has said and that the assistant superintendent has said. You know, the the rules are changing every day. They're learning new stuff every day. We're benefiting greatly by having Sodexo in-house. You know, they're a global company. They've, they've been very, very active in developing approaches to dealing with the virus, both in the United States but also in other countries. They are part, they are in partnership before this ever happened with Echo Labs, which is one of the biggest cleaning solution companies in the world. So they advised us, and and we took their advice. So we're gonna, we're gonna hire through CARE Act funds, 10 custodians, one at each school plus two at the high school, that'll focus exclusively on high-touch areas and sanitizing. If we have to modify meal service in the buildings, whether that be in the classroom or extended beyond the cafeteria, these new folks would also be dealing with that issue. So they're very, very focused on on a, on a daily disinfecting while the students are here. We also have groups who are going to be working from the time school dismisses until the morning throughout the buildings, disinfecting with nobody here. So it's sort of a two-pronged approach. It does require more people. The people are being funded through CARE Act funds, not through the operating budget. And, you know, their their supplies, their materials that they're going to be using for this are, you know, state-of-the-art and will continue to be throughout the, throughout the pandemic.
So I mean, so back to it, it definitely seems safer generally if we did do Cohort A on Monday, Tuesday, Cohort B on Thursday, Friday. I know there's a benefit to doing what your plan is. Could you speak to that? Why we would want Cohort A, Cohort B, day off, Cohort A, Cohort B?
Educationally speaking, when we were meeting with teachers from across the district, all grade levels, we recognized that we wanted to have a touch point with students at the beginning of the week and a touch point with them at the end of the week. And we did that because one of our core principles that we discussed at the the beginning of our plan was that we wanted to make sure students remain engaged and that we established, had the opportunity to establish relationships with them. And so that's a reason why we chose to have one touch point at the beginning and one touch point at the end. But also because we felt that if we grouped the two instruction days at the start of the week, then students would have more of an opportunity to disengage for the rest of the week, and we wouldn't be with them for at least five days. So we wanted to be able to see students on an alternating day basis versus having a large span of time in between when we were in-person instruction with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, remote. The remote learning plan that we have described in the plan is completely different from what was, we, we all experienced in the spring. The Department of Ed has put down specific guidance for all districts to follow, and that includes daily attendance, structured time for learning, standard adherence to all of the curriculum standards, and the issuing of grades. In our plan, we have made it such that there are times pretty much throughout the entire day where there is live whole group and small group instruction throughout the day. Students have time to meet with a teacher to learn about the overview of the lesson, but then they also will have specific times throughout the day to meet with teachers in small groups and cohorts as well. So it's completely different, and it'll be both synchronous, meaning all at the same time live, and asynchronous, where they can watch a video or, you know, check out what a video that a teacher has put into a Google classroom on their own time. So those are the two differences right there. Next slide, please. One of the other things that the Department of Ed advised, well, required for us to do is to design a school or a structure for students who, for safety reasons, are, should not return while the virus is still a threat. And so, but also for students who do not feel comfortable coming back to school. So I participated in a webinar today with the Department of Ed talking specifically about learning management systems, or LMSs, that give us the opportunity to create courses where students can sign on every single day and work at their own pace. So in the Attleboro Virtual Academy, they will be assigned an Attleboro Public Schools teacher that will act as their facilitator or coach, and then they will work independently on the courses that they've been assigned for all, for kindergarten all the way up through grade 12. There are still some specific details that we need to work out as far as, you know, what this school looks like and what a, what a schedule for a day in the school would look like. But as I said earlier, these are preliminary, preliminary plans, and we're still trying to work on all of them. One other thing that I did want to note is that you do have to opt into this, but then you can also opt out. When you do opt out, we just want to let everyone know that it is going to be, it's all, it'll be almost like moving from a, to a new school. It will be challenging to go from the Virtual Academy to the Attleboro Public Schools plan, whether that would be hybrid, remote, or in-person. And, but it is possible, and we want to be able to provide the opportunity for anyone who wants to transition from the Attleboro Public Schools plan to the remote plan, and then also from the, the remote plan, the Attleboro Virtual Academy, to the Attleboro Public Schools plan. But we just need to make sure that there's significant enough time to transition. One thing that we are recommending at this time is that if you do opt to go into the Attleboro Virtual Academy, that you remain there for the year, just because Just because, as we've already alluded to earlier in the night, there could be times when we would have to transition from a hybrid model to a remote model and back to a hybrid model throughout the year just based upon emergency situations and being able to fluidly move between that continuum. So we suggest if you want to be fully remote, then that would be the way that you would go.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Is that Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Just a, just a fair question. Is the learning management system used here in the Virtual Academy the same that we use in the classroom?
No, so in the hybrid model, you'll be using Google Classroom, and it'll be directly tied to the student's classroom teacher at the time. So whoever their classroom teacher is that's assigned for the year, the person that they'll be seeing during in-person instruction, it will be the same that they'll have for the remote instruction. The teacher that would be assigned to them in the Attleboro Virtual Academy will be a coach or a facilitator and will have several students that they'll be monitoring throughout the year.
Thank you.
Yep. And I believe that's it, yeah. Thank you.
So that's, those are the three plans?
And those are the three plans. And as we said, there's specific detail that's outlined in the packet that we provided you with sample schedules of what each plan would look like in action. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Before we get into specifics, I guess, because the plans that you provided to the committee and that will be submitted are very detailed. Where are those going to be available to the public? And how are they going to be made available so that, once the decision is made tonight, however that decision is, families can look and see what the plans, different options entail, even knowing, no matter what we choose now, we might switch to another plan? So, you know, what does Plan A, B, and C, what do they all say?
Yep, so our next submission to the Department of Ed is on August 10. And so right now, the team is, as we said, we're still working on all of the plans. So we're right now, even today, adding more detail to them as we continue to meet and discuss. And the full plans will be up on the website on August 10, after the final submission.
Thank you. Mr. Gudis?
So two questions. One, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Do we want to kind of focus questions now on like the macro level? And then as we discuss, which will we go to, get more into the micro with each?
I mean, I think there's going to be, there's going to be overlap. I think the way I would prefer it, knowing that, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to work exactly that way, is that we don't necessarily talk about questions about the benefits and drawbacks of the specific plan so much as the specifics of the plans at this point. So, you know, questions as to, you know, what it will look like if a child, you know, tests positive in school, that's a question I think that makes sense in discussing these plans as opposed to, at this point, discussing, what about the impact that it would have on, you know, a child who has no internet or something like that? Do you have a second question first?
Well, I've got way more than two.
Let me go to Mr. Storrs first, now.
So in that regard, especially at the high school level, look, I fully understand education, the classroom work comes first. That's our priority, fully understand that, fully support that. At the same time, you know, sports and after-school programs are an important part of our students' lives. So I'm sure there's a lot of parents out there who are wondering what the hybrid and what the full remote models, let alone the full in-person models, would do in regards to sports and in regard to after-school programs. And I know you might not be able to speak to every single one, but maybe you could speak to it generally.
So the commissioner, we know that for, that the final vote about sports will be, or there's another vote that will be happening on September 14. So we're not sure exactly what's going to be happening with fall sports at this time, but we did learn some information.
There are some details that will help us to answer that that are still forthcoming. But as a general principle, if it's not safe to come to school, thinking is that it's not safe to do extracurriculars either. So if we are in full remote, there's good reason to believe that our students will be prohibited from participating in sports if there are any. But also that we wouldn't be having students who are remote being involved in extracurriculars either.
So follow, if we go hybrid, where say, students who are bused, and there's a lot of ninth and tenth graders who fall into that category, is there any way that we would help them with after-school sports and activities if we're hybrid?
I'm not aware of a plan to address that as of now. I think that part of why the state is pushing us to make this decision so early, even though there's so many weeks to go, is so that, one, we hone in on one, we start to work out some of the details that are inherent to that particular plan.
All right, thank you.
Just on that note, you said if it's not safe for kids to come to school, it's not safe for them to do extracurricular activities, or sports, that's kind of the tea leaves coming down from the state right now. What, that's remote only, or is that hybrid as well?
Remote only, is the sense here.
Okay. Mr. Gudis?
So I kind of ranked questions as, as far as, you know, universal questions. Mr. Fertado, you touched on it a little bit earlier related to cleaning in the buildings and those plans. Can you also touch on, please, the ventilation systems? Because those are obviously a key part in this as well.
Sure. We were, we were engaged with two firms. One that essentially represents utility companies and works at arranging financing that doesn't, essentially doesn't cost you anything. That, you know, it's, it's sort of like the performance contract where you pay for things through the savings on your electric bill and also getting rebates. So we had, we had about three or four projects in the pipeline prior to March 13th related to air quality in our buildings. And then we were able to, you know, pretty quickly add on to those where we right now are invested in project values of about $890,000 throughout the district, every building in the district. All of our buildings have been reset from a air quality perspective to not allow the building. Historically, to save money and based on CO2 readings that sensors take in the buildings, you would stop the flow of fresh air from time to time when the settings allowed it, to save money on heat or cooling or something like that. That is, that's been stopped. So the minimum amount of fresh air coming into the buildings at any time throughout the district is 15%. And it goes up from there, depending on the conditions in the rooms. That's all been done electronically. It's not a manual process. So those, those systems have all been put in place. We did extensive work in the high school quad areas to revitalize those systems. And we have an engineering firm that's going to certify all of the work we've done in the context of the performance of the systems based on what they were supposed to be doing. So like I said, the total value district-wide is about $890,000 of improvements since, started prior to the closing, so since December.
And, and I apologize, I keep forgetting to remove my mask as I speak. Transportation, two thoughts that I had. How often will the buses be cleaned? I know the plan, the hybrid plan can easily clear a lot of the spacing issues on buses. But how often would the buses be cleaned? And has there been consideration for any increased number of cars for families that choose to opt out of fee-for-service and drive to the school?
So, yeah, there's a lot, a lot there. So under normal circumstances, prior to March 13, our full-size buses carry, on average, across the fleet, you know, 48 to 50 students per route. If you cut that in half, which is what the hybrid does, you know, you're down to 24, 25 students, which is the guideline for the state of Massachusetts for full-size buses. So we felt pretty confident about being able to serve the district from a hybrid perspective. If we go to a full, full in-school model, there's no question we're going to have to do what, you know, what's generically called double runs. So going out twice to get the same full load of students, which would require two, you know, tiered start times at every school, which would result in a rather late dismissal at the end of the day for the elementary school students. So that's, that's also a challenge. If we were, as a district, going to return to, you know, full in-person learning within the context of the guidelines as they exist today, we'd have, we would struggle that way as well. Met multiple times with H&amp;L Bloom, who's our service provider. They have acquired equipment and intend to disinfect the buses after each level. So essentially, after each run. So a given bus makes a, in the morning, makes the high school run, then makes the middle school run, then makes an elementary school run, same bus, you know, six in the morning to nine in the morning. And in between each of those levels, there will be a disinfecting process. So we have to be careful of the timing of our routes. If we go in, say, a hybrid model, picking up 24 students would be similar in terms of length of time, although not quite as much as a regular route. You still have to travel that distance. So we'd have to be very careful at the end to make sure we have time to do the disinfecting and then go back out to the next, next level. That would hold true for our mini-buses as well. Our vans, we're still in the process of developing protocol for disinfecting the vans. However, they're only limited to one or two students because of the space in the vehicle. So that whole program will sort of be turned on its head, which will be a bit of a struggle in a lot of ways. Because with one or two students, we're going to probably have to deploy our vans to the more expensive out-of-district routes to accumulate the funds needed to bring a vendor in with bigger equipment, you know, for transit buses, for instance, to bring our, the students normally served by the vans in the district.
Thank you. And some, as you were speaking, a very quick question. Will there be any, any barrier? Is Bloom installing anything on the bus to separate the drivers from, from the students?
There will be a barrier on the driver, but the students are required to sit diagonally. So on one bench, they're against the window. On the, on the next bench, they're on the other side. They're in the aisle, next bench in the window. So they're, they're in a kind of a zigzag in the bus. So they're not, they're not very proximate at all. It would be a requirement to have a mask to get on the bus. For students who are at the stop without a mask, we will have masks available for them. When they board the bus, we will have hand sanitizer mounted on the bus when they get in the bus. So that, that's the, you know, the plan as of right now.
And then my last question for now. Ms. Regan, you talked a little bit about the AVA, opt-in, opt-out. Do you know what exactly that process will, will look like? I shouldn't say, do you have an idea of what that process will look like?
So anyone who would like to opt in, we will be reaching out to all of our families at some point, between now and the start of school, to see who would like to opt in. We do have some number of students that have already, we've already learned who they are from the survey that was completed last week. So we already know who some students are. But we do have a number of students that we have to reach out to to see what they would like to do. So that'll be the first, the opt-in. And then opt-out will be more of a transition, making it so that it's not abrupt and that the student can successfully transition and finish out some of the work that they're doing in the AVA and then have a, you know, a fluid transition back into the APS plan.
Thank you.
Just following up on that, and you had mentioned before when talking about the opting out and back into in-person or hybrid model. And that it would be like starting at a new school or joining a new school. And I believe you were speaking about, you know, educationally, because you wouldn't be at the same place that you were when you were at the Attleboro Virtual Academy. But I also know that our, our schools and class sizes are pretty full anyway. If a student who lived in the Studley District opted into the Virtual Academy and then decided they wanted to go back in-person, are they automatically going back to Studley? Or is there a chance that Studley's full and they would have to go somewhere else?
Good question. I need, I need to do some, some more research on that. Because we haven't gotten that far down the line yet to see exactly what can happen.
One just unrelated question I had, thank you for answering that, is that with regard to COVID, I know, you know, as Mr. Sawyer said, we're, you know, lucky that in this area, in Attleboro, you know, we seem to have it relatively under control right now, where the numbers are a lot lower than they are elsewhere in the country. And I'm hopeful that that stays the case. But even, even assuming the best that, you know, Attleboro continues to be diligent and the numbers stay low, if students are back in school, you know, the likelihood is that, you know, a student or a staff member will come down with COVID at some time. So my question is, what is the plan if, if a student or a staff member comes down with COVID? With regard to that student, with regard to the rest of the students in that class, and also with regard to any siblings that the student may have?
So procedures before coming to school, we're going to be making sure that we take the time to really share information with families and checking with students, with their children, every morning to see how they're feeling. And if they are not feeling well, we're advising that they, they stay home. That's first and foremost. And then if a student does present with symptoms of COVID while they're in school during the day, one of the things that we've been advised to do is to have a medical waiting room or isolation room within each building. And so the student would go to that space in the room, and then a family member would be called to, immediately, to come and pick them up. From there, we would discuss if they had any siblings and where those siblings were. And then also, we would discuss with the principal and the administration about what the next steps would be as far as if that classroom should be, should go remote or if, you know, if the, who should be contacted within that classroom to let, to let everyone know that's in that classroom, the student may or may not have presented with symptoms. And so there's a whole process that needs to take place. That's been outlined in a full set of guidance from the Department of Ed. So that guidance will also be included in the plan. It wasn't in the plan that you currently have right now, but it will be included. I don't know if anyone else wants to add any further information on that?
I guess the question also, is there any mandatory quarantining that then comes with the students in that class or family members?
So if a student is tested positive, then that's when they would need to, they would have a mandatory quarantine.
Would his or her siblings have the mandatory quarantine?
I believe so, yes.
And what about the others? And sorry to keep peppering you with the questions, but what about other students in that class if the student had been in class?
Then that's when there would be a discussion about what would happen to that class specifically.
But it's not necessarily mandatory that the whole class was going to quarantine?
It is, yeah. They would be required to go fully remote, but we would need to have a conversation with everyone about that first to make sure that that's exactly the course of action that we would need to go. We want to make sure that they're, that we're positive that the student has COVID before making any rash decisions about it. And so that's one thing we want to be sure of first.
Thank you. Mr. Demanci?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of questions. My first one is for Mr. Fertado. And thank you, first off, Mark, for everything that you and Jason and everybody is doing. I was one of the folks who toured the schools, and I do appreciate you taking the time. My question, and I'm following up on Mr. Gudis's a little bit. Are we going to have certifications for all nine? Are we going to have certifications for all nine buildings in terms of air quality? And when do we, so when exactly do we expect that?
Um, we just signed the contract this week. So, uh, they, they've been in the buildings once, you know, to understand what the systems are. Uh, and then they'll be back to inspect. So I, I wouldn't say more than fourteen days.
Okay.
Because again, it's, it's the operation of the system that they're checking.
Okay. And, Ms. Regan, I have a, I have a couple of questions. I just wanted a little bit of clarification. And, and Chairman, I'll try to be, I, I know there's other times we wanna talk about different things, but I think this one kind of falls in. I just wanted to understand a little bit, like, about the hybrid. You're a teacher and you have twenty-six students. And so the expectation is you are in-person learning with one cohort on one day, thirteen kids, and another day, the other thirteen. So you have all twenty-six. And while the thirteen that were in on the Monday, will they have any guidance from an instructor on the day that they're remote?
So they'll start the day with their, depending on the grade level. K eight specifically will start the day with their classroom teacher as a, a morning check-in, um, or a homeroom teacher. If you're in middle school, they'll start the day at a, with a check-in. And then at the end of the day, they'll have another check-in opportunity with a classroom teacher. Throughout the day, um, I know Ms. Maderos has been working on this throughout the day. Service providers, if you are, if they are remote, will be meeting with students throughout the day as well to provide special education services.
But if, but if a student had a question in the middle of the day, they wouldn't have a support to get an answer right away? Like, because that teacher is teaching the class in, in front. Is there some built-in time in between, like, teaching these cohorts that I can answer? Or would there be an opportunity to just zoom in while the other thirteen are, are still being taught? Is that, is that a possibility?
So we don't have that set up right now. But, um, once, this is again, one of the things that we, we still need to talk through, as we said, preliminary. So if there is staff that's available that we can use to support students that are working remotely from home, if they have a question, if there is a concern, then we'll be able to, um, give them some time throughout the day to do that. But it's not written in the plan right now. But as we continue to move forward, it could be.
I can appreciate that. Thank you. Another couple of, I have two, Jim. Thank you. Is that survey binding? So once we make a decision, then we have a line in the sand for when parents will have to make that opt-in, opt-out decision.
So the survey that they just completed?
Yes. A lot of, a lot of folks did not necessarily fill it out. So you have an idea. And I, and I tried to encourage as many people as I could for that purpose. But is that, like, if somebody said, "Opt-in," but then after hearing the meeting and everything else, they're like, you know, "Maybe I wanna opt-out," or the other way. Is there, is there a timeline then that they have in order to do it? Or was that survey it?
Survey is not binding and it was really for planning purposes. We needed to figure out approximately how many students we would have that would want to opt into the Virtual Academy. So right now, um, our numbers are at about seven hundred, seven, seven fifty. And so we still need to go through all of the lists to see, um, and reach out to those family members to see if that's what they still want to do. It's not binding. It was just an opportunity to help us plan.
Okay. And that's, I asked that because I felt like that was the answer. I just wanted to clarify for anybody watching that, that that's the case. And then I guess my last question will be...
Could I just jump in on this point?
Sure, sure.
Absolutely. What, the survey that we just completed is, was not binding. Those lists will be helpful to us for planning. The schools will be reaching out to every family to ver- verify what they'll be doing. But there will be a deadline before the start of school by which we ask people to commit so that we can be ready for that first day. So there, you know, this wasn't a commitment, but there is a day coming in the next couple of weeks in which people do need to commit. And while we've said that, you know, at any po- you know, you, you have a right to move from, uh, the ABA to, you know, the, the other plans, uh, or back and forth, right? Like, that's, that's a right that people have. But, um, at some point, we have to be able to be prepared for, for day one. And that takes, that takes some time. So, um, we're gonna ask people to make a choice. And if they change their mind, they can change their mind. But we're not gonna be able to accommodate, uh, last-minute switches, you know, for a, a pretty significant number of weeks around the start of school.
And I appreciate that. And the reason I asked the question was so that it could be answered on this broadcast so that people are aware. Because there were a lot of questions about the survey. And then my last question will be, um, I would assume then that the number of teachers that would be, um, dedicated to ABA, will they be dependent upon the number of students who opt in? Is there going to be? Because we, we already ha- we have six thousand students and we have, you know, approximately three hundred fifty to four hundred educators. So, like, that's not changing one way or the other. But is it going to be, is the ABA program for those that opt into it going to have a similar, uh, ratio than, than, you know, folks that might be in a hybrid or an in-person model? So, is that, is that the goal?
The ratio is, is a little bit determined by the number of staff who need to, um, not return as well, right? So there's going to be a number of staff who cannot return, just like there are students who can't return. And that's the sort of the base point for how many staff we're looking at to, to staff the ABA. I don't anticipate that that number is going to magically match the number of students we have. Based on preliminary results, it seems to me that we're understaffed for ABA. So we're gonna have to look at where there are opportunities to realign the staff to meet those needs. But yes, I mean, we wanna make sure that, uh, our staffing is equitable, you know, across the district, including the students who choose to stay home.
Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing me to ask those questions, Chairman.
Mrs. Storrs and Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, a couple of questions. Yesterday, four of us, Ms. Sawyer, Mr. Demanci, Ms. Porto, myself, were able to tour Studley, Brennan, the high school, and Hyman Fine. So we were able to take a look at all levels, as well as the open versus the regular style of classroom. And I do wanna thank Ms. Porto and Mr. Demanci for setting that up and Jason for giving us the tour. So it, it was actually really good to see what you guys are able to do with the space and with everything. But one question I had, you know, the classrooms generally had twenty-something desks spread out as they need to be. But if we go hybrid, would half of those desks disappear?
No. So desks need to be assigned to the students so that they can keep their, their personal belongings and materials in them?
So it would be every other?
So, within the classroom, it would be every other?
Understand.
Desk that would be used so that they would be six feet apart or three, three to six feet apart within the classroom space?
Okay. That, that makes a little bit more sense. Great.
Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about how the cohorts are going to be determined?
So, uh, right now, at this time, and I always, I wanna preface it by saying that, we think that the best way to do that is alphabetically. So cutting the alphabet in half. And that way, that allows for, um, families with the same last name, whether you are, you have an elementary, a middle school, or a high schooler, to all go to school on the same day and all be remote on the same day. The other piece is, we wanna make sure that, uh, sometimes there are families with different last names. And so we're collecting a list of those as well and making sure that all families can attend school on the same day. So the hope would be that fifty percent of the, fifty percent of our enrollment would be in Cohort A and fifty percent would be in Cohort B.
Okay, thank you. And then just to, to clarify, um, that would be across all levels? So if you, our last name B, whether it's elementary or middle or high school, that's your data. Thank you very much.
What about situations with, um, like neighbors or potential carpooling or something like that where the last names don't necessarily match up, but they rely on each other for getting to school or watching kids after school? Is there gonna be a way for families to, to discuss that? I know it can open up a can of worms where, you know, they wanna make sure that, you know, they're in with the same day with their best friend, which, you know, everyone would like to do. It might not be possible in this situation. But there are, there are also, uh, you know, realistic situations where, you know, John Doe and John Smith live next door to each other and really would benefit from going on the same day.
Yeah. So the, the primary concern has to be to keep families together as, assuming that that's what families want. But we'll make every, you know, accommodation possible so that people are going on. I mean, because there are other concerns too. Some people's work schedules might not match up. So there're gonna be a lot of requests to be on a different day than there are. And we're, we're gonna do everything we can to make as many people happy as possible.
Thank you. One other question I had on the, on the remote option is if we're in a, if we're in a remote setting for any period of time where all students are, are learning from home, are teachers still gonna be required to be in the building to, you know, ensure that, you know, from, for the school day period where kids are expected to be working and checking in, that the teachers are, are there, are working, are not, you know, are not at home, you know, checking in and out? Not to say that teachers do that, but, um, it would be concerning to me if, you know, teachers are home with their two children and their two children are doing remote learning as well. And then how much attention are the teachers giving? I know that they put a ton of time in, in the spring. But, um, if we're going remote, you know, I see it as more of a remote from nine to three, the school, if that's a school day. And for that to work, the teachers need to be there. So, you know, are they gonna be in the buildings? And it seems that, to me, that that would be the safest way to, to accomplish that.
Yeah. I don't think that that is something we can say is definitively been answered. And I would also mention that, you know, we are, are engaged in, in bargaining with the union. So I, that's certainly gonna be one of the topics that we're talking about. But, um, the bottom line here is that we think that the schools would be the best place for the teachers because that's where their materials are. That's where we have more reliable internet for some of them. You know, there's, there's a lot of benefits that we could, we could mention. So I, I, I think that's where we're leaning to the degree that we can make that happen.
I mean, just, you know, speaking for myself, that would be an important part of, you know, the remote plan is, is having that in place. Mr. Gaddis?
Uh, so a couple of the other questions I had got touched on a little bit. So to follow up on Ms. Johnson's question regarding the cohorts, does it make sense, and I realize logistically this could be complicated, but does it make sense to look at transportation as a way to, as a way to set up cohorts so that, uh, so that we're minimizing, so that we're kind of forced distancing, uh, reducing the number of folks that are at each bus stop?
Yeah, uh, that would certainly make things more efficient. But I, I think to Lori's point, uh, you know, families would suffer. And, and, uh, you know, given the circumstances, if we were going to hybrid and all of the hardships that that's going to impose, I, I think we have to put our families and students first. And if that means a more challenging transportation system, then, you know, it's up to us to figure that out.
Okay. And then to follow up on Mr. Storrs's question a little, a little bit ago related to desks. The, the DESI guidelines back in June didn't have entirely definitive language around desks. It was, if, if you're gonna be fully in-person, they should be no more than three feet, or no less than three feet apart. They should be in rows. They should be facing one direction. Does a hybrid model provide any flexibility around that? So can desks be set up somewhat differently since students would theoretically be in every other desk and, and more, and outside of that six-foot radius? I don't know if...
Yeah. I don't think it, I don't think it provides relief to things like they should all be facing the same direction. It, it certainly makes the room, uh, you know, more spacious and less, you know, less concerning. But, uh, no, I don't think it relieves anything.
Yeah. Because they kept using the word "should." So I didn't know if, you know, is DESI gonna say? Are we gonna get slapped on the wrist if we allow the, the educators to, to play around with furniture a little bit? The last question I had, there we haven't really touched on yet, Mr. Furtado. Before you move the microphone, you might wanna send it the other direction. Across modalities, I was wondering, Ms. Maderos, if you could touch on, uh, the services that special ed will be providing? What does it mean for hybrid? What does it mean for fully in-person? What does it mean for remote? I know they were in the plans, but...
Sure. So, uh, special education, um, like in the spring, we also have pretty intensive guidance. That's a little bit different than the spring. So in the spring, we didn't have to implement the IEP services as is on the IEP. That is no longer the case. We have to implement, um, per the frequency on the IEP. So a little bit different now. So for special education students, whatever model we are in, we are implementing the IEP. So we started to do that in E S Y with kind of this established time for live instruction and direct services, uh, each day. And that would continue whatever plan we're in. Whether we're remote, in-person, obviously, they would be in-person. But in hybrid, um, so I just wanna clarify, in hybrid, I, the, the draft plan that you received, we continue to revise that for submission on the tenth. You're actually gonna see a Cohort C for, um, the hybrid model because we are gonna have a group of students who are going to be in-person every single day because of their IEPs. That may be adj- the day, the length of the day and the time of the day may be adjusted based on the program. We're going program by program, um, in IEPs. But we are going to have groups of kids who will be in session every single day. So I just wanted to clarify that for the, for all of you as you're making those decisions and also for, um, our parents watching today. And then for remote services, if you decide to go remote as a district and it's not ordered by the governor or by our local board of health that we have to close a school or a district, we are still obligated to provide services, which will become a little bit tricky, particularly for our intensive programming and how those students would receive those services remotely. The guidance advises us to provide for those students as many in-person services as we can, even if the district decides to go remote. So that, that's kind of the, the difference there. And just for families watching, we are having a, um, AICPAC meeting, a town hall on Wednesday night at six-thirty. They will be sending out a Zoom where we're gonna do kind of an overview of services for, for families, as well as answer questions that are more specific for special education at that time.
When was that again? I'm sorry.
Uh, Wednesday at six-thirty on the twelfth.
The twelfth. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sawyer?
Hi, thank you. I was, I was lucky enough that I was able to go on this tour. And, um, there were certain things that concerned me because we all know how younger kids can be. And having them even sitting three feet away, some of the desks, even to get by them, to get to their seat, I could see them touching each other or... It just, it just brought up so many other concerns that I had. So I wanted to touch on a couple of things, like, in regards to that. So say a child gets sick. Do we, does Attleboro have the ability for rapid testing?
I'm, I do not believe we have that ability. We would be counting on, we'd be counting on, um, the healthcare system outside of the schools.
So a child could potentially come into the school sick and use the bathroom, like, eat their lunch in the classroom with the other? I mean, I'm assuming, are we eating lunches in the classrooms? Are we going into? There's so many unknowns here. I just don't even know where to start with my questions.
Do you want me to answer the lunch? I'll answer the lunch, I guess. So it, it really is, uh, building-specific where lunches will be served. And they'll be served in a variety of locations, whether that's in the classroom, in our cafeterias, um, in other locations within the building. Correct. Depending, and also depending on the mode, whether we're full in-person or, um, hybrid as well.
Well, someone should find out what, what Attleboro's capacity for testing is. Because I just feel, we all know that parents, and I'm sure all of us have done it at some point, Tylenol'd up their kids and sent them to school. This is not the time to do it. And I have concerns with my daughter sitting in a cohort with children that I have no clue. Because like other people, my spouse falls into the category where we need to watch. And so we're extra safe. But living near the park and going to walk my dog there every day, I've slowly seen, because kids congregate there, that the carelessness is starting to happen because we've been at a low peak. And I'm afraid that if we open up the schools again, that we're gonna have an outbreak. And if we don't have the capacity to get testing done, to know immediately,[1752.84] testing done to know immediately, do we have to section off this classroom? Or, I mean, same thing with like the nurses station and the isolation room. I mean, none of these things are truly set up. It's just like an idea, this is what we need to do. Well, how do we do it? I mean, we're running out of time. And as far as teacher accountability, I've received bunches of emails and phone calls, and I've witnessed my daughter last year, like teachers not showing up on time, or they send an email and change the class date. Like, how are we going to maintain teacher accountability? So that they're actually there. Because I can tell you right now, the only class that faithfully did something for my daughter was Jim. And I think that's kind of sad. And then my last thing is like, like most things, it's like CTE, if we go back to school, how are we going to participate those classes?
So I can answer, were you speaking specifically about accountability and remote learning?
Yes.
So it's very different this time. And the guidance that we received last spring from, from the Department of Ed reduced the time on learning, the structured learning time. And they, we did not have, we weren't issuing grades. And so it was, it was just a very different time. Although, we haven't started in our new remote plan yet. And I'm sure there will be some things that we need to work out because, and I, you know, I look at the plan and I know that there are already things that need to be worked through. But I know that we do need to take attendance every day. Teachers will need to be in live sessions every day. And grades do need to be issued. So those are two things that are strong indicators that they will be there in live sessions, small group and large group.
Okay.
What about CTE?
CTE, we did receive some guidance. I haven't had a chance to meet with Mr. Gay yet to talk to him specifically about his plans, but that's in the works as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Porto, do you have a question?
Yes. I know Hyman, Fine, and Hill Roberts schools are different from the rest of them. Have you guys done any extra items to the classrooms? Because they are open classrooms. There's no walls. I didn't know if there was extra support in those rooms for the teachers, for the kids, that type of...
Sorry. Regarding the environmental conditions in those buildings, they are different.
Right. Yeah.
But they're actually, you know, if I had to pick one, I'd probably pick one of those schools rather than the other schools. They, the windows don't open, which is kind of a struggle, but their environmental systems are all up. You know, the building has very high ceilings. The air pressures in those buildings are different because of the construction. And everything is pushed up into the building. So it's dramatically removed from where the people are. So, and again, we've adjusted the ventilation to require 24/7 fresh air going into the system. They're very controllable systems because of the nature of the building. So we, we feel, you know, most confident probably with those two buildings in terms of the environmental systems.
And then, the other question I had is, if we are remote and a family or children need the extra help, how can parents reach out to get that for their child? I'm not sure.
If someone needs extra help, they definitely need to reach out to their teacher.
Well, right. But how would that like, like how would that work with, if an IEP was needed for that child? Like you go through the process, but I know the testing is done in school. How would that facilitate if it were remote?
So if, if it's remote and not, the governor didn't close us, or the, the board of health hasn't closed us, then we have to provide an in-person evaluation.
Okay.
DESI is also, we continue to get guidance. Tomorrow, we're getting guidance on providing remote assessments for families as well as additional preschool guidance regarding our requirement for our community peers.
Ms. Storrs?
Thank you. A couple of questions, so I'll kind of group them. CDC and the state, they said like to do this safely, there's two things we really need to focus on, and that is, to use their wording, de-densifying and cohorting. So the first question has to do with the support staff paras. I know very often, paras move throughout the building, sometimes throughout the district on a day-to-day basis. And then the other one is because if we go hybrid, there's a lot of space at the high school that wouldn't be utilized on a day-to-day basis. Obviously, that's a great way to de-densify because it's 50% of the students. But have we thought about maybe utilizing that space for, say, eighth grade? This is a concept I discussed with the superintendent earlier today. Take the eighth grade and have them bust and learn at the high school, because there's more room at the high school when you have 50% of a 2,000-student body. You could take the few hundred eighth graders and move them to the high school, which would de-densify the middle school. So just, that's a concept, but both of those questions really, like the support staff, are we going to have them co-horted in specific classrooms, or will they be as normal moving around? And then the other idea about the eighth grade or...
Well, in terms of the eighth grade, we would have to crunch some numbers to see whether you really can fit all those students, you know, because we're talking about 250, almost 500 kids. Whether or not that, there's really that space for it in the high school, I can't say. So we'll have to look into that and get back to you. As for our use of paras, though.
Sure. So the majority of paras are in our substantially separate programs. So they would be assigned to those programs, and we would be adjusting for them. Some of those programs, as I said before, would be five days, they're, they're going to be onsite, if we were in a hybrid model. The other paras, we have a limited number of paras who are ELL paras. Those would be attached to ELL programs. We're also going to prioritize some of those students for, even if, if we were in a hybrid model, for the remote days to be in-person for some of those students. So we'd be using the paras for that. And then we have a limited number of inclusion paras, again, for special education services that we are obligated to provide. So that would be our priority with the paras.
What would happen with those inclusion, inclusionary paras? If they have students, you know, like a student who receives services in classroom, as Mr. Storrs said, that par, the para who provides that may also provide it to the next classroom over throughout the day. Is that still going to happen? Or...
So that, that is one of the, so when we talked about the cohort A and the B with the alphabet, there are going to be times where the alphabet is not going to apply for special education because of the IEPs. We're going to try to look at IEP services and group students that way as well, so that we can kind of limit staff going in and out of those classrooms as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Demarche?
Thank you, Chairman. Can't get, can't get enough of that. I wanted to confirm, and Mark, I think where I was headed with this might be towards transportation. But, but the guidelines for DESI now, is it K through four, 850 hours of, of class time? And then five through 12, it's 935?
Nine, twelve, nine thirty-five.
Oh, so it's K through eight, 850, and nine through 12 is 935. So K through eight, it's an average of five hours a day, and it's five and a half hours a day for the high school students. So I, maybe more of a suggestion or a thought, but maybe that, maybe that factors in a little bit with the transportation and the multiple runs. People were asking what would happen to the students who get there first, and would they start their learning versus, you know, from a cohort. But maybe some of the opportunity, because the amount of class time has been reduced a little, might be beneficial to get people in, into school from a transportation standpoint. I don't know if that's been worked out, but I just wanted to, you know, maybe that's more of an announcement to folks that might be listening, that that's some of the guidance that's been given. Or does that also include transportation time? I would assume that was strictly class time.
So that, that's learning time?
That's learning time, yes.
So one of the reasons for the reduction is because we're going to lose more learning time than normal for procedures within the building, moving to and from lunch, getting into the building, getting out of the building. All those procedures are going to take more time, which means less time in class, which is why they made that reduction in the total time. If we have transportation concerns that make us alter the school day, we can apply for a waiver on those times and get even, an even shorter amount of time for the year if necessary. But that, that time has been reduced to allow for how the school day is not going to be...
That was kind of my one B, because I figured it was a combination of, you know, having to deal with things like getting kids to the bathroom, or to lunch, or even getting them into the building.
Mask breaks.
If, you know, mask breaks, yes. Kind of following up, because Jim, you and I talked about this a little, and you started down the path. Are Finnberg, or County Street, or any of these other buildings that we still have in our purview potentially usable if we thought we needed to spread some folks out?
So we, Finnberg is in use by network. And that will be exclusive to network. We did not look at County Street as a potential site. We didn't think we were in a condition where, where we would need to overflow that way. Again, if we come back full in-person, that may, that may have to be looked at. And because, as the superintendent pointed out, the feasibility of full in-person is, is pretty impractical at the high school. So we would certainly have to consider that in that, in that mode, but we did not look at that yet.
Okay.
That, that building, at the end of our use, two years ago, three years ago, was in pretty rough shape in terms of heating and air systems, as well as roof. So it would be, it would be a pretty big challenge to revive that space.
It's been turned over, it's been turned over to the city.
It was turned over to the city, but I don't think they've done anything with it. And I guess just in the interest of, there's no great solution that's going to come out of tonight to just try to think about, you know, sometimes we have to think outside the box. So I felt like I should ask that. And then my, my last question, Lori, just to reiterate something. It's AVA-related. Will there be honors program capabilities in AVA? You may have students that are honor students that for a variety of reasons maybe have to be remote, or they're chosen to be remote. Can they still stay on an honors program?
Yeah, so we've already received some inquiries actually from students about this. And so I will be meeting with the high school administration to work through all of the details around that, to make sure that students will have the same, the same, you know, opportunities in the Atterboro plan that they would in the AVA.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First, I have a comment and then a question. I'm really glad to hear about Cohort C for special education. That was something that came up quite often with my conversations and correspondence with parents. So thank you for that. I know it's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be very much appreciated. My second question, or my, my question, rather, is regarding kindergarten and first grade. Can you explain a little bit more about what the life, the day in the life of a kindergartner and first grader might look like, and how that would differ from other elementary school grade, grades, period? I was able to go on the tour earlier this week and to see how the desks are spaced. But again, we had talked earlier about how there's a lot of group work and a lot of circle time at that age. What, what safety measures are we putting in place for those youngest students in our system?
So, we've never done this before.
Right.
So I really don't know what it will look like, but I would imagine that, you know, that was when I was referencing plexiglass barriers for classrooms to have small group instruction. That would be one thing that I know that kindergarten and first grade teachers rely on the small group work a lot throughout the day, where they move in and out of large group and small group throughout the day. So that's one measure that we are definitely taking right now. I'm sure kindergarten and first grade teachers are very creative and very innovative. And I'm sure that they will come up with different ways to, you know, figure out how to keep the students socially distant and still engaged in what they're learning.
Sure. And then following up on that, we know that mask-wearing for kindergarten and first grade is recommended, but not required. If we have a group of parents that they are asking, you know, my, my child has been practicing wearing a mask, I am more comfortable if we do an in-person with them being in a cohort that is mask-wearing. How would we be able to address that?
So, one thing that we're going to be talking about a little bit later is the need for policy. And as a district, we have to decide what our policy on face covering is going to be. And one of the aspects of that is where we stand on K and one, based on the guidance. You know, we can make it optional, or I know some districts have decided to take the extra step and go get that it's mandatory. So I think that that's a separate issue that we have to grapple with as a district.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do I have some questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hill?
Hi. All the logistics are top, so thank you, Lori. Just would like to talk a little more about, you know, a potential positive case in a cohort. And if you could elaborate more on envisioning the procedures, particularly about notification for parents in the classroom. Also, you know, thinking of, you know, I've kind of been running through all of this through my mind, you know, if the student has gone to the bathroom during the day. You know, Lori, you said, you know, you want to make sure the student is positive. Again, was talking about the idea that we don't, the tests are, they don't come back quickly. So can you elaborate some more here and try to get some clarity about what this will look like?
So, we received explicit guidance from the Department of Ed that listed exactly what would happen if a student in any classroom contracted with the virus or had symptoms. And so what we would do in that moment is send the student to the medical waiting room. And then from the medical waiting room, we would be able to care for the student and call the parent, make sure that they were okay, and were then sent home. As I had stated before, we wanted to make sure that we messaged properly to the families if, in fact, a student was sent home for COVID symptoms. And we want to make sure that everyone is aware of what, what steps were taken so that everyone was safe within that classroom. So, you know, we have specific guidance, and it's hard to say like what, what would happen under each condition, because we have to follow exactly what it said. We've been in close contact with Ms. Ebert, our nurse coordinator, and also with our local board of health. And so we are talking through specific steps on what would happen within each case to make sure that we were adhering to all the policies that would be in place.
Okay, all right. Okay. A moment. In thinking about substitutes, what do you anticipate? What are you thinking about now in terms of, you know, the pool of substitutes that you're leading? And how does it differ if anything from what we have now?
I'm going to hand that one off to Ms. Singer.
So, as you know, substitutes are always a concern every year. We are in the process of surveying our substitutes to find out how many of them will be coming back this year. And then, you know, ideally assigning them to a building based on also feedback from our staff survey as to what staff will and won't be coming back. Do we already know who needs a long-term sub and placing substitutes beforehand in those classrooms so that they can remain with a specific group of students? So we're in the process of gathering those numbers.
Okay. Do you anticipate it's going to be a bigger pool that's needed now?
I, I don't even want to take a guess if it's going to be a bigger pool. We have not had a lot of inquiries into additional substitutes wanting to come into the system. So I don't, I can't say specifically if we'll have more substitutes this year than we, than we did last year.
Oh, let me change the question. Do you think it's prudent to get a bigger pool of substitutes? Because I, you know, I have a hybrid monoline vision, teachers getting sick more frequently.
Yeah, it's always great to have a large pool of substitutes. Again, the same concerns that staff members have for working, substitutes have as well. So while ideally, yes, we would love to have a larger pool of substitutes. I don't know if that's possible this year.
Okay. All right. So, all right. In terms of the mask breaks, how many... In terms of mask breaks, how many do you typically envision during the day? And, you know, what kind of time are we talking about cumulatively per day that are spent on mask breaks in your best estimate?
So Desi has provided guidance regarding required mask breaks at lunch, obviously. And then I think one other time during the day. Again, we're probably going to decide that classroom by classroom and by level. So our younger students obviously would need probably more mask breaks. And again, depending on the building, the weather conditions, those kinds of things. That's how we would determine that.
All right, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, one of the things I'm thinking about is time on learning, you know, and what is the benefit of the in-person learning? And trying to get a sense of actually, you know, jumping through all these hoops to do in-person learning. And so just trying to get a sense of what you guys are thinking in terms of mask breaks and what we actually, you know, is it once an hour? You know, I understand the mandated mask breaks, but just in terms of the district? Because that certainly does affect the amount of time that students will be spending. And also every time you move around, it does, you know, provide opportunity. So just looking for more clarity there. But it may not be, you know, we may not have the clarity that showed.
So I guess I'll respond for special ed programming. We've been working during ESY with getting our students with social stories to begin to tolerate masks for longer lengths of time. So that would be probably the first, you know, as students transitioned back, that's something, you know, in addition to the social distancing procedures that teachers are going to be working on, particularly at our younger levels and a substantially separate programming, is tolerating the masks for longer time. So what we envision is that as we build kind of those routines that the, the number of mask breaks would decrease as students tolerated masks for longer lengths of time. So it would be a routine that we would be building and scaffolding throughout the year as we built other routines that we would normally do with students.
Ms. Regan, what about, and Ms. Madara said she was speaking as to special education. What about with general ed?
So in general ed, each of the building plans have time in there for mask breaks. So they would be times throughout the day. So let's say if there was a span of time in the morning where the students would naturally break for snack, or they would naturally use the restroom in the middle of the day just to break up the length of the morning, we would take that time to use as a mask break. So whether that would be taking a few minutes to go outside, or let's say maybe there would be a physical education class scheduled at that time. So possibly during the physical education class, if they remained at least 10 feet apart during that time, or at least six feet apart outside, they'd be able to take off their masks during that time. So I think once we start to get into more detail with the schedules themselves, the day-to-day schedules in each, in the hybrid model, we'll be able to identify specifically the areas within each, as Ms. Madara said, in each classroom and in each grade, how many times students would need to have a break.
Do you have, so do you anticipate these being significant amount of additional breaks? Or just a new way that our current breaks are utilized, I guess is the question?
Similar to the way I answered Ms. Johnson's answer about K and one, what would it look like? So for this, I would say our teachers are pretty creative and innovative. And I would say that given the opportunity and knowing them with time on learning, they would use that opportunity as another time to just learn in a different way.
Mr. Hill, back to you.
Thanks for that clarity there. I'm going to pause and let other people ask questions.
Thanks. Ms. Sawyer, did you have a question?
Yes, I actually, I had one other question. It's more, more of an idea since people throwing out things. Since the state is opening in phases and we are, have three different plans, would it be feasible to open the schools up in phases? Like the first trimester, say we do all remote, which gives us plenty of time to figure out what needs to happen or if the state guidance changes or anything like that? Would that be a possibility?
The short answer is yes. I mean, the, the plans are designed to move from one to the other. And, you know, how we do so and when we choose to do so is, is a local decision, unless there is a decision made at the, at the state level like there was back in March. So.
Okay, thank you.
You are free to decide to handle that.
Any other questions on the specifics of the plans? Mr. Gettis?
One question I'll hold off on, but one, I noticed in the survey that was, the initial survey that went out in July. Sorry, in the initial survey that went out in July, the feedback was for folks that were, if we had gone to a hybrid model, it was a very close split, 52, 48, 52% saying they would prefer to be back on a week-by-week basis as opposed to day-by-day. Can you speak to the rationale in, not necessarily going against a very slim majority, but, but what was the rationale in going with a day-by-day plan versus a week-by-week?
One, because there isn't a mandate in one way or the other, we thought that we had a little bit of leeway to do what we thought was educationally the best. And while I think there's some real advantages going week to week for the older kids that, you know, would be interesting, in the end, we thought that the week on, week off didn't meet the needs of our youngest kids. I don't know if Ms. Regan wants to add to that at all?
With a closer look to the survey, as Superintendent Sawyer said, the high school, I think, was able to tip the scale a little bit more with the week on, week off. That was their preferred mode. And then the rest of the district was more for the weekly, the, I'm sorry, the daily.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Sawyer?
Thank you. Just to touch base on the, the survey Rob brought up. That survey wasn't sent out to every school, through every school. COLO didn't send it out at all. They posted, I think, on their Facebook page, but the parents didn't go look there. So that, those numbers really, to me, should be thrown out because it's not a true assessment of the whole district.
I'll start off and then I'll hand it off to you. That, that was part of the reason why we knew we needed to send out another survey. And we knew that there were some schools that, for whatever reason, didn't have the opportunity to email it out. It was posted on social media, so that's the reason why another survey was definitely sent out.
Yeah, we had, we had some problems at a couple of schools, which, you know, quite frankly, is just inexcusable in the end. And, you know, I'll apologize to any families who, you know, felt like that their voice was taken away from them and their, by their inability to take the survey. We need to do a better job than that. But this is why we've moved to REMIND as being the district means of communication. And we'll be sending out information to families in the, in the coming weeks. We believe that REMIND is going to be a much more effective and efficient way to communicate because, you know, not that there's any way to defend what happened, but sending, sending a mass email through the system that we currently use is very, very challenging. And as it turns out, if you don't get it right, you don't necessarily realize that you didn't. So we apologize for that unfortunate situation and we're going to work to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Mr. Gettis?
I'll get my last prepared question out of the way now, I guess. Some districts are trying to find a way to use their, their after-school programs for, for childcare, for essential workers. Is that something that we think may be feasible in Attleboro? Yeah, let's vote it.
Right now, Abacus operates, does not operate under DESI, it operates under Early Education. And the guidelines from Early Education are pretty strict and restrictive. So the numbers are very small, but you can, in terms of the number of students you can work with. We, right now, we're contemplating and looking at, looking at the younger children. We don't know where a cutoff would be. You know, normally we go right through middle school. It's highly unlikely, as long as the current guidelines from Early Education stay in place, that we would be able to accommodate middle school students. It's just a question of how high we can go at the elementary school level. But those are the students that are most vulnerable to having needs for, you know, after-school and before-school care. So those are the students we're looking at. We're still trying to kind of assess where that, where we're going to be able to draw that line to accommodate as many students as we can.
So it's a possibility, but hasn't been determined?
I think we're going to be operating. It's just, it's just a question of, you know, how many we can accommodate? How do we determine, you know, who's in, who's out? And how, how high we can go in terms of the elementary school level while staying with the guidelines?
Thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Hill?
Just to follow up on the equipment, lots of stuff, Mark, great job on ordering all that stuff. Is all that stuff anticipated to show up before the start of school?
Well, we have global pressures on some of that stuff. I'm, you know, I'm kind of thrilled that the PPE pretty much is all in. We're still waiting on some gloves, but per the, the DESI guidelines announced, you know, I think in June or something, we, you know, we've got 165,000 masks on-site right now. We've got disposable downs. We've got all the things that we needed per the guidelines. The Chromebooks, you know, as you would imagine, are a problem everywhere, not, not just in Attleboro, not just in Massachusetts. The state has started to get a little aggressive with the vendors and try to put pressure on them. We, we had to submit some of our data, how many we ordered, who from who, what were the delivery dates that were promised to the state. And I think they're going to kind of put the number together and say, look at this, you know, get it to us. My understanding on the Chromebook front is Intel is really the kind of bottleneck. So, you know, we, we were given a December delivery date. Dell has told us that, you know, if Intel can, can do what it should be able to do, it might be October, but we haven't gotten anything more optimistic than that. Mrs. Regan talked about desks because, again, we, we've had this collaborative approach for a few years now, so to get students into the buildings, we would need to order 2,000 desks. Those are going to be right at the wire. They're, they're talking kind of mid-September. You know, we're coming, coming back mid-September, so that's going to be a close call.
Just one question on that, Mark.
Yeah.
On the desk, so if the desks don't show up, is that a necessary condition for having, you know, we have to do it anymore?
It's absolutely a necessary condition for full in-person. Hybrid, again, we can, I, I think we can massage a little bit and get away with a couple of weeks.
Got it, thank you.
Anyone else have any, any questions on the specifics of the plans? My, my last question has to do with the, the last couple of weeks of summer. We've already pushed the start of school back to after Labor Day. The state then came out and reduced the days that were required and said that you could start on September 14th. I expect to take that up later. And I understand that a large part of the reasoning behind this is to, to give teachers the training that they need for all these different modalities, whether it's remote, whether it's, you know, dealing with all the procedures required for in-person and then hybrid as well. Can you explain a little bit what that time period is going to be like and how it's going to be utilized?
So again, I believe some of this is part of our discussions that we have with the union. But first and foremost, the, I guess, the most important one would be training for our staff in the, in the, all the health and safety regulations and guidelines. That's number one. So we're working in collaboration with all of our nurses in the district and putting together a, pretty much a certification program that they have to follow to know exactly how to put on a mask properly, how to take a mask off, and what to do, proper hand washing technique, remaining socially distant. So that will take, I think, quite some time to make sure that everyone understands the procedures that are associated with that. Some other things that come to mind specifically are the use of technology. We will be using Google Classroom in, in a hybrid model and also in a remote model. And so we want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable using that. We want to provide some time for families so that they know how to use some of these platforms, especially our incoming K and one families may not be as familiar with how to use a platform like Google or any of the applications that are a part of that full suite. And then also we want to provide some time for teachers to start to really think about their curriculum and what is essential and what they should be doing in-person learning and what remote learning would look like in a hybrid model. So those are just a couple of things that come to mind, but I'm sure through discussions with classroom teachers, there'll be significantly more things that come up.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we have the three plans that have been submitted by the administration. There are the preliminary reopening plans for in-person with restrictions, hybrid model, and remote learning. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve these preliminary plans. Again, with a motion to approve not meaning that that you're approving anything for the start of the school year, but just that these are the plans preliminary that will be submitted to the state and that we will work off of as we move from different modality to different modality. Second. Any further discussion or questions?
Chairman, might you want to consider the calendar as part of the plan?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So do you want to discuss, do you want to just reach, broach, excuse me, brief the committee on the proposed calendar?
Absolutely. I mean, to put it most simply, the state has allowed us to go to 170-day school year so that we can provide the 10 days of training that is being recommended. We already have two professional development days at the start of our calendar. Commissioner has allowed districts to bank days that were already in the calendar. And so that is our recommendation, is that rather than add the 10 to the two and go with 12, like some districts are doing, we're saying we should go with 10. That would allow us to start on September 14th rather than the 16th as some are doing. And I really like that because we would then have those days available to us throughout the year so that if there was an emergency and we had to switch to, say, remote, we could implement one of those days in the middle of the year as a transition day so that everyone can, you know, switch from one to the other without needing to do so, you know, one day to the next. So I really like the idea of having those two days in the bank. I like the idea of starting September 14th as soon as possible. You'll notice that we did add half-days for the first two days. The thinking there is that we need the first day, whether it's, whether we're in hybrid or not, those first two days, we really want the schools to be focused on protocols, right? Training students on what the safety protocols are, practicing them, using the time at the end of the day to debrief, make adjustments, and make sure that when we hit the ground running with full days on the Thursday of that week.
What day is that, 17th?
Yes.
That we're, you know, in full swing by that time. So I think that pretty much summarizes the ways that this calendar is different than the one that we have currently.
Did anyone have any questions about the proposed calendar that had been sent around? All right, Mr. Gettis?
For the professional development days, you noted the two in reserve. We can, are those just to be determined? We can?
So those are the two that we would bank and use?
Okay, yep, yeah.
You know, as we, as we think is necessary if in fact something happens throughout the year.
Thank you.
Mr. D'Antoni?
Mine's just procedural. Do we vote the calendar regardless as one motion and then we vote to approve the plans as another?
So right now, what I'm going to request is that we have, is a motion to amend the previous motion to include the approval of the proposed calendar. So it's a motion to approve, excuse me, to amend the prior motion to add approving the proposed revised calendar.
Is there a reason to connect them?
What's that?
Is there?
Because they're part of the plan, they're part of the proposed plan technically. Because they're part of the plan, they're part of the proposed plan technically.
But I mean, to what Mr. D'Amanci is saying, full remote, hybrid, full in-person isn't really affected by the calendar. Shouldn't we take these up?
No, but the plans are based on that calendar.
Sure.
So if we don't adopt that calendar, we're going to have to make some changes to the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I simply meant, do we vote the calendar at first?
First.
And then we vote the plans?
I'd rather just do it together.
It sounds sticky tacky. I just wanted to know what the proper procedure was.
Yeah, the first motion's already on the table, so I think the easiest way is just to move to amend the motion, adding the calendar to the previous motion. So again, I'll entertain a motion to amend the prior motion to add approval of the proposed revised calendar.
To move.
Second.
So now we are going to be voting strictly on the amendment to add the calendar to the prior motion. We're not voting on the merits. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gettys?
Yes.
Mr. Weathers, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amanci?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have a motion seconded before the committee that approves the three preliminary reopening plans and approves the proposed revised 2020, 2021 school year schedule. Again, this does not select a plan for the starter school, simply the plans themselves being approved and the calendar. Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amanci?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Weathers, yes. Mr. Gettys?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So that brings us to the question of how we're going to choose at this point to plan to open school. And it's 9:15 right now, and I don't anticipate the next section being brief either. So I'm going to say, let's take a three-to-five-minute recess and reconvene to get to the big topic of the night. All right. Welcome back. Welcome back to the Attleboro School Committee meeting of Wednesday, August 5, 2020. At this time in our agenda, the next item is our continuation of the discussion on the reopening of school, specifically discussion as to the recommendation from the administration as to how to begin the school on the school year on September 14th. For that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Swire.
Thank you, Chairman Weathers. So in terms of a recommendation, the first recommendation I'd like to make, and I've alluded to it already, the committee definitely needs to take up some policy concerns based on what we need to do for this year. You know, face coverings is definitely one of them, how to handle a switch from mode that isn't an emergency, those kinds of things. There's a whole bunch of things to talk about. There's some models that we can take a look at in the coming weeks.
Yes, I would just say, you submit those to the policy subcommittee and they can take that up. If their next meeting's not for a while, Mr. Storrs, I would just say...
Yeah, to speak to that real quick, Miss Singer already approached me about the need of having a meeting, so we're going to push one into later August.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay. So the administration has a recommendation for you tonight. I'd like to revisit the criteria that I mentioned earlier in the presentation and talk about how we feel about each one specifically, and then from that, explain how we reached our final recommendation. So in terms of feasibility, as I started with earlier this evening, it is the recommendation of the administration that we do not go in-person at this time at Attleboro High School. We do not think that it is feasible to do well. Now, perhaps when we get to a place where we see how many students are actually in the building and we have some practice with protocols and get people in the building and really live with it, maybe the perception of that will change. But at this moment, from a feasibility standpoint, the administration recommends that we do not go in-person at the Attleboro High School. As for the other schools, it is completely feasible. So there is a choice to be had there from a feasibility perspective. In terms of safety, there is, as I've already stated, there's no question that remote is the safest option for students from our perspective. And we think that bringing students back in certainly is an increase to risk, and then going full in-person is another increase in that risk. But from the administration's point of view, under the current conditions in Massachusetts, that we do not think that it is unsafe to have students in our buildings, right? That is not our position. We think that the risks to certainly bringing in people to a hybrid model are not such that, you know, we would have concerns around that. From a management perspective, there is no question that the administration, the building administrations, as they have prepared to create those plans that you have just approved, which I want to thank you all for doing so, they have serious concerns about their ability to manage their schools in an in-person setting from the start. The level of change, the regulations, all the things to consider, and just how crowded we are as a district leaves them very, very concerned about that. And so from a management perspective, the administration does feel like a hybrid is a more manageable start for us as a district. In terms of impact, you know, we will be publishing survey data for the entire community. We have to go through and clean it up a little bit. You know, the way that we do the surveys, at least currently, such that people can come in and go in and, you know, they can take it multiple times. We also had some people who, for their own security reasons, didn't answer it in a way that makes their answers something that we can tabulate. So we're going to clean it up a little bit, but we will be sharing that. But I can tell you tonight, as you've already been given, of the people that took the survey, which was 2,400 roughly? Which we would estimate at about 2/3 of families, right? They represented 3,700 student responses.
Two more.
Yeah, so that's, you know, more than half, which on any survey is significant. We're not aware of anyone not receiving the survey this time, so we believe it's valid in that sense. So the survey results are significant, and they lead us to believe that we have about 20% who are saying that they want to go remote for the year, right? So that was an estimate that we had. We thought we were going to be in the 15% to 20% range, and that's where we've landed on the survey. Again, at least 1/3 of the district didn't take the survey, so that number could change in either direction, but it's coming in roughly where we thought it would. Of the 80% who plan to join us in the plans and ride that out as circumstances dictate, we did ask them what their preference was for a start, and the results there are, again, there's no mandate one way or the other. So in terms of impact, it was 47% wanted in-person, 43% wanted hybrid, which from a statistical standpoint, we would say is pretty close to even. And then, but there's another 10% who wanted to start the year in remote. So I think the point there is that just under half think that we should be going in-person. So I don't think this community has a strong sentiment one way or the other. I think, as has been the case, I'll just say anecdotally from my inbox, I think that there is a wide range of opinions about this, and I think there are loud voices on both ends of the spectrum. And the fact that the survey showed a divided community on this, I think reflects, you know, what my experience has been. So there absolutely is a tremendous impact that has to be weighed here, but I don't think we are facing a situation where the community feels strongly in one direction or the other. And then, you know, finally, educationally, I want to say very clearly that we respectfully disagree with the leadership of the MTA and their position that remote is the safest and best way to start the school year. We believe that kids belong in schools. We believe that under the current conditions, we can have kids in our schools, and we think that we can educate them better if we have personal contact. Now, there are some students who absolutely can't rejoin us for very serious reasons, and there are some families that, you know, are not going to be comfortable. And so we've come up with a plan for how to accommodate them. But for the rest of the students, it is our opinion that to go to start the year in remote is to squander the opportunity that we have right now to actually have personal contact with students, which is what we think is best for learning. Now, under normal circumstances, we would tell you that in-person is obviously the best, right? You know, the traditional school setting is what we prefer. We're speculating because, as Ms. Regan has said multiple times tonight, we haven't done this before. We don't know how it's really going to be. We have our best intentions, and we're going to give this our best effort, but we don't really know. But we believe that educationally, there is reason to believe that the limitations caused by the restrictions will greatly impinge on our educators' ability to do their best work, that it is hard to do the kind of teaching and learning that we believe in with kids at distance, in rows, facing one way. And that perhaps if we rise to the occasion, we can deliver a better education from a hybrid model under these conditions because the hybrid gives us the best of both worlds. It gives us the personal contact twice a week that the remote does not give, but it gives us a chance to assign work that students can do in groups virtually on the remote day, that allows us greater freedom to do more interesting work than what you can do when you just have them in rows. So from an educational perspective, you know, hybrid might be the better way to do it in comparison to in-person under restrictions. So when you put all that together, the administration's recommendation to the committee tonight is that we start the year in hybrid. We think that that'll give us a chance to practice the protocols in the safest possible place. It'll give us a chance to get students into buildings, to make connections, and will allow us to get our feet under us and to demonstrate to everybody that we can do this safely. And that if the conditions allow it and continue to be favorable as they are today, we would want to, within a few weeks of the start, reassess the situation and have a conversation as a community as to whether or not we believe that we've been successful enough to warrant consideration for a move to in-person. But we do think that a start in the hybrid mode would be the best choice for us as a community.
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions, just a couple of things off the bat. One, you touched on this a little bit, but I just wanted to make clear, is there any doubt from the administration's point of view that remote presents the most challenges educationally for our students?
So, you know, it depends on how you frame these things. If you put in the social-emotional concerns, if you think about the whole child, we absolutely think that we should only be going in remote as a response to an emergency situation, with the exception of the students who, for health reasons, just can't be with us. We would not recommend that we go to remote unless the condition with the virus is significantly worse than it is now, and we need to do so for obvious safety reasons like we did with Mark.
My next question is with regards to remote and hybrid. I think it applies to both, is that it's just, in looking into this, reading it, remembering what the spring was like, although admitting that, you know, it should be better in the fall, a hybrid model where students are out of the classroom for three days a week really seems to me like it will deepen the achievement gap that is already a problem that we try to overcome within our schools between students, based on family situations, parents' ability to be involved, internet connection, and what have you. It just seems like, you know, everything that we try to do to reach every child is going to be really exacerbated and harmed by those type of models where students aren't all in school every day. You know, there are a large, there are a good chunk of students who can, could go remote and could go hybrid, and they would do their work, their parents would make sure they do their work. You know, there are others who won't, and there are families who can't stay home to be with their children during the day, or maybe they elect to stay home to be with their children during the day, but that means that they don't have their job. So I just worry about what this does to the already, you know, wide divide in our community.
Absolutely. The more time kids are away from school, the more the differences of what home looks like has an impact on outcomes, right? The more time they're with us, the more control we have to do our good work, to get the outcomes we're looking for. The problem, so for that reason, you know, that's why we're taking a pretty strong stand and saying, I do not recommend remote as a starting place, again, under these conditions. Now, two weeks from now, that could all be different, but as we sit here today with the kind of conditions that we're looking at, yeah, for that very reason, we don't think remote's the best instance for children. Educationally, though, there is some thinking among both your rank-and-file classroom teachers to the degree that I have some sense of how they feel. And let's be clear here, some of them do believe we should be going remote, and I want to be respectful of the fact that we do have educators here in Attleboro who feel that way. But the fact of the matter is, is that many of them have been participating and helped us to come up with this picture that we have now, and both, again, many teachers, many administrators, you know, we believe that there are things that we can do under hybrid to help to offset that that aren't going to be quite as successful because, again, it's not going to be school-like we know it under any circumstance. And so, for example, under hybrid, because of the lower number of students in the classroom at the time, you know, some of those concerns that you have, Chairman Weathers, can be addressed by the small group work that can be done while the kids are with us, whereas when we're in in-person, you know, the size of the classroom, the way that the desks have to be spaced, really gets in the way of the individual attention that we think that we can provide in a hybrid mode.
Thank you. Mr. D'Amanci?
So I don't know where we start to go with everything that everybody might be thinking, but I guess, first off, Chairman, you brought up some very strong points that I think, no matter what we decide tonight, I think everybody here is concerned about education, about what we may be missing. I have differences of opinions necessarily about gaps because I think the entire country is dealing with it, and it's, you know, there's some relativity there, but I do have those concerns. I do have concerns about socioeconomic inequities, food insecurities. I do have concerns about the haves and have-nots, gap widening, you know, if we don't have kids in the classrooms. I am concerned about social-emotional needs. I'm also concerned about... I'm also concerned about social-emotional needs with the structure that many of our kids, especially the younger ones, are going to be coming into. Because we basically had to regress to 19th century industrialized learning methodology that we've been trying so hard to get away from in order just to have kids in here. And I'm concerned about how much time is going to need to be spent on procedures and protocols and how often there's that virtual, over-my-shoulder look to make sure that everything's right and everything's safe. And I'm concerned about some of the levels of education that we will be able to achieve. And I'm going to have those concerns no matter what. But I also agree that the best place for our kids to be is in the school when it's safe to do so. It seems like a lot of thought has been put into these plans under very short timelines. And I can't be prouder of our administration for everything you are doing. You know, that being said, you know, going to the remote model to open the school doesn't mean that we are staying there. My concerns are we go to a hybrid model where we haven't worked out all the kinks and we don't have a whole lot of time to do so. If we start with remote, we still have the opportunity to refine those opportunities to see what hybrid or even in-person eventually gets to. My concern is that we start down a path where people are in class and two weeks later we're shut down anyway. And in one way, shape, or form, you know, that's going to be an impact on teachers, on parents, on students. So there's no good answer here. But my question, I guess, is have we looked into some of the stock of the social-emotional concerns that people are going to have being in the classrooms when they may not necessarily feel it's safe, but yet maybe for one reason or another, maybe their parents said, "You have to be in here anyway because we have to get you in school." Like, are we prepared for that? And do, you know, has that been taken into effect with, you know, with having some of these decisions right now?
I would say that a component of it is that we see the fall in the hopes that the numbers stay where they are as being an opportunity to really focus on social-emotional concerns, to build relationships with kids while we have access to them, and to build the kind of classroom culture that will make us successful if we have to go to remote when we get into the winter and there's a second surge, as some people are predicting. So we really feel like there's an opportunity there. And for that reason, you know, we're going to have to approach how we teach kids differently this year. And we're very concerned about academics. We always are. We're, you know, we're educated. That's why we come to work every day. But we recognize that students have been through a lot already, and they're going to be facing a whole different set of unfamiliar circumstances come this year. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why we have 10 days at the start of the year, so that we can, as a district, work with teachers to make sure that we're all ready to meet the kids' needs, you know, as they are, not necessarily as we would normally experience them. I don't know if Ms. Regan wants to jump in with anything else.
I agree with Detective Sawyer. I think one of the reasons why the recommendation is to start in a hybrid mode is so that we can establish those connections with students and those relationships. One of the things that I've heard anecdotally in speaking with classroom teachers is that they felt like they were able to support their students as much as they possibly could in that remote model because they already knew the student, they already knew the family, and they already knew how to support them in a remote environment. Starting fully in a remote environment, not knowing students, sometimes makes it hard to establish those relationships and, you know, make a connection with the students. But as educators, we always want to do with our students. So we just, I think everyone in this room knows that.
Mrs. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to say that I commend the administration for understanding and being vocal about how important in-person learning is. I don't think I could support full-remote learning unless there is an actual situation where we would need to go to that. You know, because we live where we live and the numbers are what they are here, I believe that some form of, whether it's hybrid or full-in-person, is feasible. I think it's safe to say if we were elsewhere and the numbers were higher, we wouldn't be thinking about them. Is that fair?
Correct.
Thank you. You know, looking at some of the experts, you know, Director of the CDC, for example, came out recently and said that, quote-unquote, you know, "It's critically important for our public health for schools to be fully in-person, to reopen fully in-person." Dr. Fauci recently said that there are significant public health consequences if schools don't fully reopen in the fall. These are the experts, you know. So personally, I would prefer K through eight being full, you know, in-person. But I also hear and understand that that may not be feasible. That may not be the best option. There's a lot of other supporting reasons that I'll get into after I let some other people speak as to why I feel in-person is that important. But, you know, I just, again, I want to commend you that we're not even, that you're not recommending full-remote. And that, you know, right now, it sounds like from the administration, the hybrid is what you're recommending, but you're also saying K through eight, in-full-in-person, is something that could be done.
It could be done.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask another question, just because it kind of ties into both what Mr. Domenici just spoke about and Mrs. Storrs in regards to, Mr. Domenici spoke about, you know, the fears that, you know, the virus kicks back up and then we have to go to remote. And Mr. Storrs mentioned other parts of the country where the numbers are, it might be higher. And one thing that I'm really struggling with is that if it's, if it's not safe to go back in-person now where the numbers in Attleboro are manageable and below 2%, when, you know, when is it going to be safe to do so? And what are we going to say as a metric where we can say, okay, now it's safe to go back? Because to me, you know, I tend to agree with Mrs. Storrs where my personal preference would be we go back K through eight in-person with restrictions. But even saying that, I say that with the, with the, you know, the thought that it's very likely that at some point we'll have to, we may very well have to change if that second surge happens. So it's not that, you know, I'd be burying my head in the sand as to the reality of the virus. It's just that right now, it seems to be a relatively safe time. So if we're deciding that we can't go back now in-person full-time, what, when is it going to be safe enough to do so? And how are we going to determine that?
So I think you're right that the conditions are probably not going to be better any time now, which is why I really wish to capitalize as quickly as possible on having in-person contact with students as much as possible. But the other part of safety isn't just the conditions. It's also our ability to follow the restrictions and to do the, you know, have the right protocols in place. And, you know, quite frankly, nothing has prepared us to operate on the scale that we operate on before, right? We don't have a lot of experience with this. And I think that's part of why there's so much anxiety about the idea of going back because we haven't really ever had the opportunity to do these things and do them safely. And so, you know, people love to send these stories from both sides of the spectrum, as I've talked about. But for the people that are worried about a return and think that we should be playing as safe as possible and going from, remote from the start, I've been getting a lot of stories about, you know, the camp this week that had the outbreak. I've certainly received several copies of the story about what happened in Israel and, you know, so yet we all know these stories about things that have gone wrong. When I read those stories, I never, they never turn out to be that, and therefore we shouldn't go back to school. Those stories always end with, "And it happened because the people involved didn't do what they were supposed to do." And so, you know, even under the conditions we have now, it's not that there is no virus. There's virus, right? There's X number of people per week in Attleboro testing positive for the virus. Now, it's a low enough number that we think we can go back. But we do know that if we don't do it right, we could be the next headline. And that's, you know, aside from the embarrassment of that, we certainly don't want to get anyone sick. We don't want to get our kids sick, and we don't want to get our staff sick. So that's why we believe that starting in hybrid will give us, under safe conditions, an opportunity to get used to what life looks like this way and then get comfortable enough to say, okay, if the numbers don't go up, then we can make that switch.
Thank you. Mr. Gudis?
Thank you. And I want to echo Mr. Storrs and Mr. Domenici in thanking the administration for all the time you guys have put into all of these plans and that you're going to continue to put into all of these plans, especially knowing that there's, that 33% of the work that you have done will not be implemented whatsoever, at least 33% of the work you have done. So I happen to agree with the administration in terms of supporting a hybrid model. And it's not a, certainly not a light decision to come to. Mr. Domenici mentioned that there are going to be kinks related to anything we do with in-person or hybrid model. We're going to have, we're going to deal with kinks, probably the same number of kinks with remote learning. Like, there's, there are going to be kinks everywhere because we're venturing into territory that we've never been in. With the procedures and protocols, the, I think the innovation of the administration and the classroom educators that we have come to, that we've been spoiled by, I think can, can address a lot of those. Mr. Sawyer mentioned the MTA stance on fully in-person. Some of the reasoning related to their stance, I did agree with, especially around the three-person minimum. Although the, they've said to open the schools, they've, they've still maintained that gatherings shouldn't be too large, that people should still be six feet apart, that we should be engaged in PPE as much as possible. So there's, there are some caveats there that I think the hybrid model brings into place. That being said, my question is, and I know I've asked this in a couple of settings, but I just want to confirm that as of right now, the local and state departments of health have not given any quantitative numbers in terms of what it would take to shut down the, the schools, whether that's across the state or locally?
There is not currently an agreed-upon metric. Although I know superintendents across the Commonwealth have pressed this matter, and we remain hopeful that that will be resolved before the start of school.
Because I will say, and again, even supporting something hybrid, I'm somewhat reluctant to do. And the educational components to it, the equity components to it, are the reason why I'm leaning towards hybrid. But I almost think we have to have a zero-tolerance approach to it. That if, we talked earlier about the procedure for one student or one teacher getting sick. Our schools in the, remember the other big issue you were dealing with in March where we were talking about restructuring the grade levels and restructuring the schools? If we had a siloed approach to the educational system where a student that goes to Willett is, their family is also at Brennan, that's a different story than, you know, Thatcher and Studley feed into three middle schools that have connections to all five elementary schools and the high school. So it's, it's not so simple that, that one classroom, I don't think it's as simple as shutting down one classroom. I can see that being a large concern, so.
Your comments remind me that although I've briefed the committee previously on this, you know, people listening at home haven't heard that under feasibility, one of the things that we determined is that we cannot distance our students at six feet. Now, the guidance says no less than three feet and six feet wherever possible. And we can get everyone in at three feet, which, again, is in compliance with the guidance. But there are very few places in the district that we would be able to afford six feet. And so that's another piece to this, is that there's a real debate about whether or not three feet is truly safe or not. Now, the state says it is. I don't know that anyone really knows. And that's another reason we have for thinking that perhaps a start at hybrid, see how that goes, and then bringing the kids in as well. Your comment about the feet, I hadn't mentioned that earlier tonight, and I should have.
But it's, but it's reasonable to guess that with, that if we can get everybody in three feet apart, if only half the students are in. And realistically speaking, it would be less than half of the students because so many are going to be remote. So we're really looking at about 40% of the students. We can get them a lot closer to six feet than...
We'll be at more than six feet with a hybrid.
Yeah, but, right. Okay. I do have other comments and thoughts.
Which is a better condition to practice all of these procedures.
Right.
Right? And get used to that, that environment and how that operates and how we function, both for the kids and for the teachers and for the administration.
And so I do have other comments, but the last one I'll make for now is that a little bit of context related to the hybrid, the 43% that were interested in hybrid. A lot of the families that, that I have spoken to about the hybrid model that want the hybrid model, want it because they want their child in school but not for the full five days. So if our goal is to get as many students into the building as possible, I think if we, if we go with an in-person model, you're not going to get those, you're going to lose a significant chunk of that 43% to a remote, to the remote learning, which we've all said it has, has a number of, has a number of concerns related to it. So I'll pause on my other comments for now. I apologize for taking so long.
Mr. Larson?
First, I would also like to thank the administration for the plans. I mean, they're, you can just read through, and you can tell it was an incredible amount of work that went into putting all those together. So thank you very much for that. And I know we're in the education business, and that's been what we've been talking the most about tonight. But we have to remember that we work for all the families in Attleboro. We work for everybody in Attleboro. And I guess some of the concerns I'm thinking about, we do have a lot of different families in a lot of different places. And hybrid, I think, is going to drive a lot of families crazy. I really do. I know we can't do in-person at the high school and meet the stand, meet the guidelines. So to me, that's, you know, that's a hybrid at best. But K to eight, I mean, how do you tell a working mom or two working parents that the third grader is going to be home three days a week? I'm thinking back to in the spring, even when we were out of school, we continued to provide lunches to a lot of families. We got to the point where we were giving out two lunches on Friday. So some kids would have something to eat on Saturday. We have a lot of students who, they get breakfast because they can get it at school. They get lunch because they can get it at school. And that might be the two meals they get that day. So now they're only going to get those two days a week. So I'm a little concerned about that. I think if we can meet the guidelines for K to eight in-person, I seriously think we need to do that for the sake of the students and the families and the community. I think, you know, there's more than just education at stake. Education is what we do. I get that. But I think we have to look at the total family situation that we're going to do this to. And I have real concerns about the hybrid at the, at the younger ages. Thank you.
Mrs. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Mr. Larson brought it up. I think I'll piggyback off that. First, I want to say that thank you to all the staff and parents who have been emailing us. I would say a month ago, I was getting maybe five a day, and I think it's ramped up to double digits every day from staff members. They did an amazing job of, I'll speak for myself, but of letting me know their thoughts on, on this decision. And I very much agree with a lot of the concerns that were expressed in those emails. I also agree with a lot of the concerns that were expressed by the parents. I would say the majority of the parents, they, you know, rely on schools for a lot of things. A lot of them, we do have a lot of families that have two parents that work. And, you know, we don't want to think, and it's not the case, our schools aren't daycare, but parents do rely on schools for the ability to work. So it is an issue that we need to take into account. That's why I, I do agree with Mr. Larson. It's the bigger picture. You know, first, I think it's important to say, we talked about it before, but we need to say it again, no parent is going to be forced to send their kids to school if they don't want to. So any parent should understand, no matter what decision we make, they still have So any parent should understand, no matter what decision we make, they still have the ability to do remote learning, as we talked about earlier. So the parent should be okay, as far as the decision that we make. But I'll, I'll get into it now. You talked about it before, the whole child. Education is what we do, education is the most important thing, but there are so many other things that happen at school. So Mr. Larson talked about nutritional support. I talked to Mr., you know, I talked to our business manager earlier today, and, you know, I heard around forty percent of our student population are free reduced lunch. That's approximately twenty-five hundred students, free reduced lunch. That's breakfast and lunch for the majority of those students every day at our schools. I commend the administration, and, and I'm glad that we were able to do what we were able to do during the shutdown, but from what I was told, we had approximately one-hundred-and-fifty lunches being picked up on a day-to-day basis. The thing about the two thousand, twenty-five hundred, give or take, students, free reduced lunch, who rely on those meals every day, down to one-hundred-and-fifty being able to pick up those lunches, that's, that's huge. So the nutritional support is, is a major issue. Mental health support, student anxiety, depression, that is a legitimate concern. I don't think anybody could try to argue that the services that we are able to provide within the schools are beneficial in that way for many students. Child abuse detection, upwards of fifty percent, actually upwards of seventy-five percent of, from what I was able to determine, up to seventy-five percent of child abuse detection happens within schools, and that makes a lot of sense. I'm not saying Alaburu, I'm talking nationwide, but generally, that's a, that's a true statement. And the statistics show that over the shutdown, there was a fifty percent reduction in reported cases. So it's a legitimate concern. Drug use disorder, there was a greater than ten percent increase in drug use in adolescents in Q1 compared to the previous year. And suicides, and then of course, parents that will ultimately have to choose to either stay home to help their kids or go to work to support their family. These, these are all legitimate issues that is beyond what we've been talking about, beyond what we've been hearing from the staff and the parents. It's the whole child concept that we talked about. And lastly, I'll just say that the experts, again, the director of the CDC, Dr. Fauci, has indicated that full remote learning disproportionately harms low-income and minority students over the other students. Would, would the administration agree with everything I just said, generally?
I mean, you, you threw a lot in there.
I did, I did, no doubt, no doubt.
I will say, I, I, I generally agree with what you're saying.
Thank you.
Mr. Gettys and Ms. Sawyer, then Mr. Domenici?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Mr. Larson and Mr. Storey's point around nutrition, under, under a remote model, we would, we would set up the same food service that was available in the spring. Is, is there a reason to believe that under the hybrid model, the students that are out of the classroom would not be able to come pick up the meals just as they would if we were fully remote? Because was...
We would have, we would have the same system for the students who are not, not here to pick up lunch. Another important thing to make note of is the state has applied to the federal government to turn us into a community feeding program as we were in the spring, so that anybody who had, anybody could come and get lunch from, from the district.
And, and Ms. Maderas, a lot of the, the social services and support services would also still be available to students on those remote days, correct?
So we have to abide the services, whether we're in-person or remote, so those services would continue. Our case managers, we build a schedule for their caseload, whether that student is remote or in-person.
Excellent, thank you. I'm gonna go see if we can get someone to adjust the clock.
Ms. Sawyer?
Thank you. I would much rather prefer that we would proceed with the staging going back. I mean, we're making all the assumptions that like, we're gonna maintain this two percent level going forward into the fall when they expect the second wave to hit. And I, I work in healthcare, Rhode Island's largest hospital, and they have made drastic changes to the visiting policy recently because they've been finding that people are not adhering to it. So I don't know how we can expect like, children to actually adhere to these things that we're gonna ask them when adults can't even do it, and the hospitals are now cutting back visiting hours and the amount of visitors. I just think that it's like, we're just, it's just crazy times right now, and, and our job is not only to educate the students, but to keep them safe. And I, for one, couldn't, I have reservations, like, say someone gets really deathly ill. Like, I would much rather know that I voted with my conscience and not have to worry about
Mr. Domenici?
So I just wanna reiterate again that I, every one of my colleagues here, I have full admiration for, that they have given every consideration for the views that they have today. And whatever vote we end up with, I'm going to fully support all of my colleagues for whatever fallback comes our way, because there's going to be some, because there is no good answer here. And, and Jim, you're, you're a stats guy, and I, I always love that about you. And, and I can pick stats too, and, and I don't wanna do that all back and forth. There are medical professionals who feel it's not safe to come back to school at this time as well. We could go back and forth on, on those as well. We could talk about some of the school openings where there's already immediate quarantines, and these types of things concern me. I'm concerned about all the things you've brought up, Mr. Larson and Mr. Storey, and even with how I feel that we should be starting the year remote, I'm not going to, to feel well about that vote, just like I wouldn't feel fully well about a hybrid or, or in-person for a lot of reasons, because I am worried about community, our community, and, and some of these, these concerns. But I also feel that we are very good at thinking outside the box, we are, we are very innovative, grateful that that stopped, because it's hard to get your thoughts out when the beating is happening. But, you know, we came up with solutions for when we were remote to offer food to our, to our student body, to our community. It might not be perfect, but we have some solutions. We have good partnerships for social and emotional supports within our community that we can, we can reach out to. And even if we are remote, we are required by law to provide some of those supports. So not perfect, but it gives me some comfort that, that we have that handled, and I really appreciate hearing that from you, Nayibon, because that's, that's important to me too. And I know the strain that there may be on, you know, parents that have to make a decision. And it frustrates me because not everybody's in the same station, and some of us are more capable of being able to adjust to a remote setting and, and others are not. And it would be, you know, it, I would be remiss if I didn't bring that up, because, you know, my, my children are likely going to the academy, and, and I have the advantage to be able to do that, not without its struggles, but we can do it, and, and some can't, and I, and I feel for that as well. This is an unknown entity, we're, we're learning about every day. And, and so those are the big concerns for me, because, you know, I'm trying not to be extreme here, but the idea that, that we would have any potential worst-case scenario is how I'll leave it, for any of our students, teachers, administration, or any employee in APS, keeps me up at night, because we don't have a solution for it yet, and that, that's a challenge. And so there's kind of two different paths that I think all of us will go down. And one of them is, as you brought up to the, Mr. Sawyer, I think both of these paths lead to, to going remote at some point. So one path is, knowing that, let's get as much in-person instruction as we can, because we know that's good for kids, and I can completely respect that. And then the other is, we know we're gonna end up remote, and it may be very soon, so why take that risk yet when we don't fully have our hybrid and in-person restriction plans fully vetted out yet? And it's hard, because you need people in the building in order to make sure that it works, but it's hard to have people in the building, in my opinion, to see if it works. So for me, I think there's still a lot of unknowns in starting the year off remotely, while not perfect. I'm choosing safety for myself, but I will respect what our body votes on tonight and support it fully going forward. It won't be a case of, well, I voted this way, it will be a full-fledged defense of what we come up with tonight, because there is no great decision here for any of us. The one thing that gives me a little bit of comfort is knowing that we have three very well-thought-out plans that will be a flexible continuum throughout the year, and I have every confidence in our administration and our educators to be able to be flexible as we need to in order to provide the best education we can. So that's where I'm headed tonight, and those are my comments.
Thank you.
So thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Sure.
I agree with what Scott was saying. I think, first of all, I want to proceed with an abundance of caution. I tend to view the COVID crisis, certainly the deaths are awful, but I don't view that as, you know, the, one of the risks that we need to think about, or the long-term risk, when they're, they're unknown right now. And so I compare it to the polio crisis, and then sort of people die, but the reason you avoid and wanted to avoid polio because of the long-term effects of the epidemic for life. We don't know what the long-term effects of COVID-19 are, and that's just an unknown, and that's a, that I'm not willing to, to play around. I think certainly there have been some excellent points about the services that school provides. Lots of things have been coupled in the school, primary purposes, education, yet along the way, there have been many, many services that have been added in which are needed. I do think it is possible to decouple those services and to address those separately. I don't feel like these secondary important, still important purposes of school should drive the decision to go back to school. It should drive the decision to go back to school that it's pedagogically, you know, the most important thing. I, I, as an educator, can't imagine, you know, the, the benefits of being in-person with a mask. And I would say right here, in this meeting tonight, most people took off their masks when they were talking. Most, some people didn't wear masks. It is not comfortable. My tolerance for a mask is about two hours. I've tried it, I don't know how many people have tried to wear their mask. It's not easy, and it, to me, severely limits any benefits one would get from the in-person elements. I also think, you know, I understand that mistakes are made. When we talked about the survey, it was, talked about that execution of the plan didn't happen, that there were some mistakes made with the survey. And I think this is a problem when we think about executing the highly detailed and important plans that would be involved with this type of learning. Unfortunately, the track record, as just measured by the survey that was not done a hundred percent because of some miscommunications or, you know, failure to follow with the protocol, is an example of things that can go wrong. And these are plans that need to go extremely right, and that these things weigh very heavily on me, and I can't imagine doing any version of hybrid or in-person to start a year.
So I was just gonna piggyback on something on you, you said, Mr. Hill, and then take it to a comment that I wanted to make regarding masks. You're right that many of us aren't wearing masks because we, we set the room up so we're ten feet apart, so we're not required to, to, to wear masks under current regulation. But that, you know, that, that being said, I don't think anyone likes wearing masks. I don't think anyone thinks it's comfortable. I don't think anyone thinks it's ideal in any walk of life. However, you know, the majority of people who have gone back to work have to wear masks. And the reality is that the large, a large portion of this economy has reopened, and I question why schools should be treated differently in this case. Now, I realize that there are some differences here with, you know, kids in school, and, you know, kids being hard, kids being hard to keep in, keep their mask on, but, you know, if, you know, the obvious ones, you know, that people push back on, doctors, nurses, police officers, firefighters have been at work since the beginning. And, you know, the pushback is that, you know, some of those may have, may have elected to, to take a job where there's some risk, maybe, maybe not, I don't know if that's true for nurses, but what about supermarket workers? What about, what about workers at restaurants now? What about workers in food processing that have been working all along? And, and they're wearing masks, and, and they don't like it as well, but the point is, is that that's a, that's a sacrifice that has to be made to allow us to get, to get by this. And, you know, I, I just, I don't, I guess that's the end of my point on that.
Mr. Gettys?
Piggybacking on the, on the mask, Mr. Hill, the reason I've been taking my mask off is, or I've tried to remember to, is more for lip reading purposes. I wish A A C S had closed captioning capabilities, at least I don't know that they do. So I, that was, that was my main reason for taking off my mask. I, I think something the administration has reminded us of repeatedly is that fully in-person or fully remote compared to what we knew before now is, is not what is, it's going to be going forward. It's, I, I think, related to masks, for, for me, it's, it's more a matter of adaptability. We don't know how long we're going to have to wear masks. It's, I mean, there, there are countries in the world where masks were our, were a standard even before COVID hit, which is, which is unfortunate to say, but, but I think it's, it's a, I think us and our kids can absolutely adapt to it. I, I agree, masks are uncomfortable. I, I have a big nose, it presses down on my nose, it causes congestion, it's, it's not ideal. My family traveled earlier this summer, we, so we had to deal with significant mask wearing. Our, our kids were, didn't like it, but, but adapted to it, understood the reason for it, and, and were successful with it. So I, I think, I, I do share your concerns around, or I, I share concerns with some of the people that have reached out to me about not every kid is going to be able to do that. And, and there, there can be mistakes made, which is part of why, I'm, part of why I'm supportive of hybrid is fully remote, if more of those mistakes are happening, or if those mistakes are happening, fully remote, excuse me, fully in-person, if more of those, if any of those mistakes are happening, we're putting more students at risk all at once, as opposed to in a hybrid model, if those mistakes are happening, it's exposing fewer students, it's reducing the risk. We have more distance to prevent any type of, any type of exchange. So, so I, I, I guess I respectfully disagree with parts of your mask comment, but, but absolutely appreciate what you're saying. Thank you.
I think I don't wanna lose the mask, I think it's not, it, I understand why people weren't wearing masks, and it's great that you were, you're not wearing a mask for the lip reading purpose. The point is, is that it's hard to hear someone when they have a mask on. And when you're in-person and instructing people or talking to people, that's not a benefit of being in-person. And, you know, the, keep on going back to the benefits of in-person learning, I just, I don't see how the, the, pedagogically that it's, it's a, it's a good thing. That's just to clarify my...
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Storey?
I just wanna piggyback on something you just said. You know, a lot of the economy has opened up, and a lot of people are considered essential. You know, they wear, they follow the proper PPE, and I think in a lot of ways, this is a compliment to what we do in the... And I think in a lot of ways, this is a compliment to what we do in the Alabot Public Schools. I believe teachers, support staff, administration, I believe they're essential. I believe the in-person learning that we provide our students is essential. That's my opinion. But I, I strongly believe that that, it's that important. It's essential. You know, some of the emails that we received, they, they had us turn inwards and asked us, would we be sending our own child to school before we make this decision? What, what about your own child? You know, my son right now, he's in college and he is going back to college. And it's going to be a hybrid model, just like what's being recommended, where some of his classes will be in-person and he'll wear PPE and some of them would be remote. And if my son was not in college and he was in the Elbow Road Schools, I would be sending him back. And, you know, because I, I've looked at the information, I've weighed everything, and I believe that the in-person learning is that critical. Thank you.
Mr. Domenici?
Just a couple of quick points. Jim, I completely agree with you that education is essential. A lot of us are essential. I work in financial services and I'm essential. We have 6,000 employees global and 97% of us right now are remote. So a lot of the workforce is coming back, but they're not all coming back in-person. So I think that's an important distinction. A lot of companies are back, but they're figuring it out remotely. All you need to do is look at the MBTA lot and you'll see there's maybe a couple of different, you know, there's hardly anything there. So I, I just want to make that, that clarifying point. It's not the most ideal scenario. There is no ideal scenario. But, you know, I, I just wanted to make that clear. The entire economy is not completely open for business. You also brought up something else, and thank you, could you trigger something I wanted to ask, Mr. Regan or Mr. Sawyer? How are students who are or are turning 18 factored into like the surveys? Because I've had some, some, I've had some questions come in, like, my son's going to be 18 and wants to make the decision on his own. How does that work? Like, if we have, if we have adult-aged children, are they allowed to make or take the survey and make their decision? Because I, I'm not 100% sure how that works.
Yeah, so for students who are at the age of majority, they have a legal right to make their own educational decisions.
Okay.
At, you know, the start of a school year, that's not nearly as many as at the end of a school year.
Yeah, I mean, I, you reminded me because somebody had asked me that question, so I wanted to make sure it was in there. It was a little bit off topic of my other comments, but thank you for answering.
Mr. Storrs?
So to kind of respond to, to a point you just made, and I'm not trying to debate, but I think it's great for parents who are able to work remote. You know, the fact that you're talking about having your children in the remote academy because you or your spouse is able to be there as a support system for your children. I think that's a wonderful thing for those parents who can do that. I heard from more than a couple of parents who said they were, they were pleading, please be full in-person because both of us work and we can't do this remote. We have to go to work. I have a five, you know, I have a six-year-old, a seven-year-old, and I have to go to work and my spouse has to go to work. I don't know what I'm going to do. So although that might not be the majority of families out there, it is still part of our population. And as I talked about it before, it's, it's the low-income and minority families that are more greatly affected by that than others. So.
Goodness? Thank you. So I was, I was going to, to respond to Mr. Storrs' previous comment, and I'll adapt it based on what he just said. I don't want this, for, for me, I, I worry about us looking at this, I worry about us looking at this as through an economic lens. I, I absolutely understand and agree that we, we need to be supportive, to Mr. Larson's initial point a while ago, that we, that we need to be supportive of the families in our district. We represent the families in our district. But they are, they're, they're only part of who we are working with and working for. For, for my mind as, as a school committee, our, our top priority has to be the, the education and well-being of the students. And, and so that's where, that, that, I just worry about us, us using the words economic and, and making it, putting it in that context. That, that's, that's, it's, is it a priority? Are we trying to find a way to help our families? Absolutely. But I worry about it being the, the main reason for that. And that's something that I've heard from, that's, that's a concern I've heard from a lot of folks as well.
I mean, one response that I've had to people who, who raised that concern to me is that when you're talking about the economics, I mean, you do take it into account, but what you're talking about is that a student whose parents both work and they have to go to work, so whether they quit their job or their student's home left alone, what impact does that have on the child? The child loses a one of two incomes, or if it's a one-parent household, they lose an income or they're left home alone. So that's an economic impact, but it's an economic impact that should be important to our decision-making, in my opinion, because it has a direct impact on the social, emotional health of the student and, and then potentially the educational growth of that student, in my, in my opinion, anyway. Because, you know, I agree with the overall point, but I think, you know, sometimes in talking about, you know, the economics of it, you, people lose sight of what the underlying message and concern is. Sure. Mr. Domenici?
I agree. We can't not put, you know, we have to think about the economics of things. Like, to, to, to not, to, to take that out is irresponsible of, of any of us. So I completely agree, and it weighs on me heavily. And, and education and well-being is the priority. And in a pandemic, I feel like well-being and safety, for me, takes the highest priority. But it's not without a heaviness to any decision we make. This is, this is hard. We're still here at 10 o'clock. We haven't had the motion. We're getting close, I assume. And I'll, I'll help that along by showing some brevity right now. So thank you.
And I wasn't, I wasn't trying to say we should ignore it altogether.
No, no, I agree. I, I know you weren't. I don't think anybody's trying to ignore anything tonight. I think everybody has very thoughtfully put a lot of concern. I hope everybody who's watching understands that. Nobody here is taking this lightly. You know, this is, I don't know, I haven't slept well. I'm sure a lot of other folks have spent a lot of time not sleeping, maybe answering a lot of emails. I, I mean, I, I heard from more educators than I can count. And as Jim said, it ramped up the closer we got to the day. And thank you for reminding me. I, I did want to make something clearly because I am somebody who will be voting that we start remote because I think we need more time to get our plans ready and I think it's the safer approach. But remote to me still means a full day's education every day. What we did in the spring was crisis management. It really wasn't remote learning. It was crisis management. It started off as a two-week plan and then it went to a month and then it went out and then it went out. Every one of our school committee meetings, we didn't know what was going to be happening. And I do hold DESI a little responsible for that because they delayed a lot of things which then has a trickle-down effect to our ability to react. If, you know, DESI had come forth in June and said, here are your plans, put them together by this date, maybe we've got a little bit more time to think them through. So I, I am very cognizant of things like that, but I, I wanted to stress that it's, it's a full day's education, no matter what model we choose. You know, I am working remotely, but I, my time that I work, I am working and I have to leave it up to my wife, who is not working, to handle my children. That's something I have to do. I mean, because I still have to work. And I expect that of our educators, no matter what our model is. Because if it, if it's, you know, it's seemingly looking like we're either looking at remote or, or a hybrid. In-person seems not feasible on some levels, but no matter what it is, it has to be that Monday through Friday, for the time that, that school is in session, that those educators that are there are engaged. Like, that's the piece we have to focus on and we have to focus on our students. And as much as I can sympathize with any educator who may have to figure out their own family situation, it's a working day, so that's the responsibility. And I wanted to make that clear because, and I think most educators agree, but I did get some emails that gave me pause and it, and it made me concerned. So here we are in an open forum and I, I want to make it clear that that's my expectation, no matter how we vote.
Mr. Storrs and Mr. Sawyer?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so it, it seems apparent that as far as the discussion that some of us had talked about with the K2H being full in-person, I think it's safe to say that there probably isn't enough support in this room for that to pass, but...
I don't know if I said that because we haven't heard from everyone.
So, so what I was going to recommend is maybe that could be when the time comes. I know that the recommendation is, is the hybrid, but I think it might be because ultimately, as Mr. Larson had indicated, as I indicated, that would be my preference, K2H full. But if that doesn't pass, then I would want to go the other route. So can we maybe start?
Yeah, so my, my plan, my plan is to take each level individually. It's a unique voting situation because we have three options and it's pretty split. And to start with, with the motion for in-person, vote that.
Thank you.
Move down to hybrid if we need to.
Great.
Move down to remote if we need to. And we may need to do it a few times. Because people have second and third choices.
Perfect.
Miss, Mrs. Sawyer, then Mr. Hill.
Thank you. I, I agree with everything that Scott said, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. It's like, my employer is one of those ones that figured it out so I can work from home. But I'm working from home. I don't have that ability to just be like, pause my work and go help my daughter. So I'm relying on the teachers to actually educate her. I mean, I, no matter how we vote today, someone's going to be mad. We're going to make someone upset. So we just really have to think about what is really in the best interest. And depending on who you talk to, it could be because of the socio-economical, I mean, there's just, I, I'm just torn over this.
There's no good answer, Mr. Hill.
No, there's no good answer. Thank you, thank you. But it's like, just because I'm lucky enough to work from home, doesn't mean I'm going to be able to help my daughter. It's like, I, I rely on the teachers just like everyone else. I just feel like when you think about the education and well-being, you can't, you can't, like Rob said something a few minutes ago, it's like, you can't have everyone in all at once because it's like you're putting them at risk. Well, you bring them in half, it's still half the risk. You know, and it's like, I don't want to play Russian roulette with your kid or your kid or my kid. And that's, and that's not fair for us to do that, to take that call for other parents. You know, and so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond.
I really believe there's some well-intentioned thoughts and comments about the lower socioeconomic students. I think I, you know, I work with them daily in my work, in my day job. I think one thing that also should go into the consideration here is the, the quality of healthcare and healthcare insurance for low-income students. And, you know, we're putting people at risk who are, and have access to poor health quality, uh, healthcare insurance and poor, um, health quality. And there, that's not a good situation. I think that is furthering, backs up the reasons to go remote.
Thank you. Mr. Storrs?
I just wanted to respond real quick. We talked about it before. No parent is going to be forced by our decision to send their kids to school. So we're not playing Russian roulette with anybody's kids. Ultimately, it'll be a parental decision. If there's a parent who feels that strongly that they don't want their child to go to the school, we've talked about it, there's options. Is that a correct statement? Thank you.
Mrs. Sawyer, do you have your hand up?
Um, well, I just wanted to piggyback off something that, that Bob said. I work in healthcare. I, I work in the medical field dealing with patient claims. And so I see people like, okay, for example, like Medicare. Medicare will pay a medical claim at 100% if it's COVID, if it's COVID-related. If not, you either get a deductible or a copay. Or it, it's like, and it's unfair for these families that are on Medicaid or, or Mass Health in Massachusetts. It's like, um, they're going to get hit with, with things. If their kids come get sick and then have to go to the hospital or even to the doctor or telehealth, whatever, these things aren't free. You know, and, and they, like Bob said also before, we don't even know the consequences going forward, like the lasting effects of these things. And like, so we could potentially be putting someone at risk, like for anything. I've heard people get in double lung transplants because of this. It's like, we're holding someone's future for the chance that, oh, well, we, we could get a few weeks of in-person and then, well, we might have to go. It's like, there's just way too many unknowns right now. And we're dealing with people's lives and livelihoods and, I mean, like I said, there's no, there's no answer that's going to be right for everyone.
Mr. Guinness?
So a few moments ago, and I apologize, I don't remember who said it, but the, the comment was made that there are no good options. That's obvious. We have, we have three far than, far less than ideal options before us. So it, for, for me, it's a matter of what's the least awful option. The, given all of the grave concerns we've discussed around fully in-person, we, we're worried about safety. Given all the concerns around fully remote, we're worried about equity, access to services. And that's, that's part of why I'm, I'm, I'm sitting in the, in the middle in the hybrid. And I'm going to steal an analogy from someone. That hybrid, a hybrid model is, is a training wheels model. We ultimately want to get back to in-person education. Starting off in a hybrid model gets us to figure out where we are, what our plan is, what's working, what's not working, and then transitioning from there. If we have to transition to remote because of an incident in Alabot or in the region or at the, because the, the state has dictated so, then so be it. If we, and, and I don't say that loosely in terms of someone gets sick, someone gets sick, who cares? Obviously, there's, that's, that is the worst-case scenario. But, but the hybrid model reduces the risk that the fully in-person model does. And to Mr. Storrs' point, for families that are concerned for their student or for a family member in the household, they do have that choice. So the, the 30% that are, that have said that they're remote for the year or the 10% that have said that they plan to start remote, that, that safety net is there for them regardless of our vote. It's just trying to find a way to service those other students to, to get them into the building in the, or to, to find the best educational, uh, the best educational situation for the rest of those students while also doing the best to keep them safe if the parents choose to send them back. I hope to make that my last comment before a motion is made.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, then before we get to a motion, let me just, it's 10:30, 10:35, so what the heck, let me grandstand a little bit and just say that, um, thank you to the administration, like other people, except for the work they put into both the plans and the recommendation that they've made tonight. And thank you also to the committee members for all the hard work and thought they've put into it. As has been said, there's no easy answer. I, I appreciate all the hard work. We've made a lot of decisions on this committee that, you know, have, have had major impacts from budget issues in the past to the new high school, to tri-county and controversial decisions that were hard to make. And this is certainly, you know, dwarfs all of those and, and, and the impact and the, you know, the response that we've gotten from the community and, and kind of the weight that it puts on our shoulders. So, you know, I do want to thank all you for that. And with that, like I said before, I think this is, we're going to start with elementary school, which is K through four. Because it's unique and there are three options and it seemed to be pretty split, I would like to start with a motion for in-person at K through, K through four. And then if that is your choice, I would suggest, I would ask you to vote yes. If it is not your choice, you vote no. We'll then move on down the list. And if we get through the list and we don't have five votes in any, then we'll, we'll start over and go again until the changes have been made. If you vote yes in-person and it doesn't pass, you can certainly vote yes for hybrid or remote. you can certainly vote yes for hybrid or remote if that's your choice later on, or you can vote no and go to a second round. So any just questions about the procedure before I ask for the motion? All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to do in-person with restrictions at our K through four schools.
Will that be pre-K?
So pre-K is a special ed program, so it falls under special ed guidance. So if you vote hybrid, they would be in-person, that would be our preference for them. If you wrote remote, they would still, I still have to provide services for them.
So it sounds like pre-K?
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion for in-person with restrictions at our elementary schools, pre-K through four.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Geddes?
No.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
No.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Okay, the motion fails three to six. This time, I'll entertain a motion for the hybrid model at our elementary schools, pre-K to four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Motion passes five to four. So the school committee has voted hybrid for our K through four. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for our middle schools, five through eight, in-person with restrictions.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Hill?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Porto?
No.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Geddes?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Motion fails three to six. I'll entertain a motion for our middle schools, five through eighth grade, for the hybrid learning model.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
I am, you went off.
What's that?
So Bob, Bob was no. Shannon?
Yes.
Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'm done.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Five, four?
Five, four, you're passed.
All right. Finally, I will entertain a, well, moving on to the high school, the administration indicated the court was not feasible to provide in-person with restrictions at the high school. So I will entertain a motion to go forward with the hybrid model at the high school.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
No.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Lar, uh, Mr. Hill?
No.
Okay, a motion for remote learning at the high school.
It's all moved.
Second.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
No.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Withers, no. Mr. Geddes?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Is that five, four?
Five, four, remote.
Can I point a clarification?
Yes.
From the administration, my understanding is if we're doing full remote, there's no sports? Or is that not accurate?
Though, though, our students will not be eligible for athletics.
Thank you. So no football, no, no sports because of the decision we just made, right?
We want a motion for reconsideration?
Is that, is that your guidance or is that MIAA guidance?
MIAA.
Commissioner indicated that on a conference call last week. I have not seen it in writing anywhere.
It was mentioned earlier on in the meeting.
I know, I just, it didn't sound, earlier, it didn't seem like it was confirmed.
I'll entertain a motion to reconsider before we move on, like.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is a motion to reconsider the motion. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Now we have a, now I'll entertain a motion for remote at the high school.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
No.
Mr. Storrs?
No.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Withers, no. Mr. Geddes?
No.
Ms. Johnson? This is remote?
No.
All right, so we'll go back to hybrid. I'll entertain a motion for hybrid at the, at the high school.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Uh, Mr. Hill?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. All right, that concludes that. And moving on to our, in our agenda, we have our minutes from our July 20th, 2020 meeting. They've been circulated with the materials. Does anyone have any? Actually, first, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I thought that's what we were here to discuss. Isn't that the big talking picket item? Yeah, I got sixteen questions about the minutes.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm sorry.
Uh, approve the minutes.
I guess.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, now we have open forum. This is the time where members of the community can address the school committee. Is there anyone that would like to address the school committee at open forum?
Melissa Santos from Fortin, Nick Moncrief.
Welcome, Ms. Santos. Please feel free to address the committee.
Hi, good evening, thank you. So I think some of my questions had been answered as I'm listening through this meeting. Some of the questions that I had is, if you had multiple children in your family, for example, I have four children across all levels of the school system. Two would be at elementary, one at middle, and one at the high school. And looking at the hybrid model, I believe what was indicated was that in terms of cohorts, it would be considered for all my children to be in the same cohort. So I'm not having to deal with two going in on one, you know, on two days and two, and two of the others on other days. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The other question I have in regards to busing, my high schooler would initially start with the busing. How many students are we looking at in each seat? Is it going to be one student per seat?
One, one person per row, correct? Or per, per seat? Yeah, per seat.
Family can have siblings sit together? Okay.
Um, the other question I have, I don't know if this is a question for this forum or if there's somebody else I need to be in touch with who I was prior. I potentially have an incoming kindergartner. Do we know at this point when, since school is due to start September 14th, do we know any idea when that assessment testing is going to be looked to be done?
We're actually in the process of planning for that right now. Now that we know that the calendar has been approved for this year, we'll be able to plan for the screenings and set a start date for kindergarten.
Great, thank you. Also, I had a, this past school year, I had a fifth grader who's now going into sixth grade. Fifth graders had to hand in their Chromebooks upon entering, you know, the start of sixth grade. Is he, will he be getting that back?
Yes.
Okay, and potentially my, my incoming kindergartner would, would there be a Chromebook that would be available to that student?
Uh, we have ordered devices for pre-K and K. They are not Chromebooks. They're, they're like iPads, but they operate the Chrome operating system.
Okay. Oh, and then in terms of the calendar, does that include like a February and April break?
Yes, the same breaks that were in place before. The only change that was made to the prior calendar was pushing the start date. So still the same holiday break, still the same February break, and still the same April break.
Okay, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sure a lot of us have so many questions. Does, are the hours of schools changing at all? Like, for example, the elementary, you know, doors typically open 8:30. I believe school started, you know, 8:40, and then they're done at three, you know, 3:20. Are those still the hours that we worked on, you know, prior COVID? Are those still the operating standard school hours?
Now that the district has a mode that we're going to be operating under, we need to review that. If there are changes, it'll be pretty modest. We just need to make sure we do the disinfecting that we're able to do, bring students in and bring students home within the current confines of the hours. And if not, like I said, that, the changes will, if there are changes, it'll be modest, like 15 minutes or something.
Okay, and then I think that my last question is, is during this spring season, when all of this pandemic happened, when we were doing remote, teachers had office hours that were offered to the students. If we potentially go into a hybrid model, will that continue to remain? Will teachers have office hours that either parents or the students themselves can access the teachers?
In a, in a hybrid model, the students will have access to the teachers at the start of the day and the end of the day. In a remote model, they'll be interacting with teachers throughout the entire day.
So there won't be any specific offered hours, for example, that element of those?
The, they, this is, I guess, a short way of saying they really won't need office hours because they'll be interacting with the students pretty much through the entire day. So their questions could be asked in real time to get an answer right away.
Okay, I appreciate everything. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman, we have a Lori Sawyer from 136 Curtis Avenue. Curtis, sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Sawyer.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I have a few things to say. There was talk about not being forced into doing something we didn't want to do because there's a virtual academy. But I was wanting to say that it was said by Ms. Regan that it's not the same and that we will need to stay for the year and wouldn't be able to change back out if we wanted to. So I was a little concerned about that, especially now since the vote is hybrid so that they can have sports.
Just for a point, just for a point of clarification, you're correct that it's not the same thing as curriculum. It's not going to follow the same day by day. But you can choose to go back into the regular school classroom. It's just, it was the administration's recommendation that they thought that it was best that if you start in the academy, you stay there. But it does not mean that you're stuck there if you decide you want to do something else. You do have the option and right to decide to go into hybrid or in-person classes, even if you start in the ABA. It just wasn't there, it just wasn't what they thought was the best choice. But it's, it's still a choice you can make.
Okay. So there was also talk about, you know, the numbers are low in the city. And yes, they're low in the city because they're limiting the in-person contact. They're wearing masks, they're staying apart, they're standing in lines at Walmart. And so I'm seeing now that the vote being hybrid and allowing sports, that's not limiting in-person contact and that's setting the students up for failure to get this virus. And the experts in science tell us that this virus is aggressive and unforgiving and doesn't care about our education for these kids. And so what about the possibility of youth being more of a carrier of this virus without symptoms? So any number of days in the schools, they can bring it home, the virus to people who are susceptible to that. And then nobody will know until they get it badly or die.
Thank you.
Can I have just a clarifying question? Is it, is it a, the sports question? I, I've heard that sports aren't actually happening, even if we, people voted to have high school because of the sports thing. Are, are sports happening? Can anyone provide any detail?
They have been delayed. We're waiting for a vote from the MIAA. I do not know right now whether or not there will be sports or not. I mean, there's reason to wonder if there will or there won't. And it's, at best, I don't think all the sports will run this fall under any circumstance. But I, I'm not aware of a determination. Mr. Potata, do you know anything?
You made this vote. So then you made this vote for sports with hybrid, and they're not really even going to be happening.
Well, and it's, but it's not just, point of clarification, it's extracurricular activities in general. Sports are what get the most, most press and what was mentioned. But there are extracurricular activities as well and after-school activities at the high school that if, if students, if it wasn't safe for students to go to school, if that was our in-person, if that was our vote, then it wouldn't be safe for them to participate in those extracurriculars as well. So, you know, it's not just sports.
Um, I just want to say that the rec leagues in Attleboro are running, but they're following the state guidelines because there's specific guidelines for sports. So sports aren't happening.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of different, you can hear a lot of different things. That, you know, for instance, you know, I've heard that, you know, in colleges, for instance, like a lot of colleges that are canceling football or things like that are still keeping non-contact sports like track or cross-country, which, you know, may very well be the way that we land here. So we just don't know yet.
I think my comment was that you made the vote, changed it for sports, you know, and from remote. Just, you know, and some sports are happening and some aren't. And I just wanted to kind of make that comment so you could think about that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers is a passionate Nylan from 238 Steer Street.
Welcome, Ms. Nylan. Please feel free to address the committee.
Um, I mean, being an educator myself, I get both sides of this. I completely understand that there's people who, you know, don't want their kids in school. But there's people like me who's an educator, and I do have to go and teach. Unfortunately, my husband does work out of the home as well. Has there been, and I know it was discussed, Mr. Geddes asked, and I believe a couple of the people asked, is there any thought on using Abacus for essential workers who, on the days that children are not in school? I know it was mentioned to using it before and after school. But has there been any thought on offering some sort of care for people who do have to work out of the home and don't have other options for their children?
So we are working on options, especially with other partners who might be able to help us out with this. I should also mention that there's talk at the state level of having a special disposition for educators to have access to that, you know, a full, a full week of school rather than the hybrid model. So we're waiting for more guidance from the state on that. But that's another piece of this. But yeah, we have people in the community that have reached out to us who want to help us because we know that we're going to have families who need, need support.
Right, and I know there's things that people are establishing as pods. So, you know, if there's some sort of, you know, way that we can get those families together to help support each other, you know, and figuring out a way to, you know, so that teachers can be back in the classrooms, whether it be remote or whether it be full in-person, there needs to be some support for them so that we can make this work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers is Jennifer Juschlag. I think that's how you pronounce his name, sorry. 124 Steer Street.
Good evening. Please feel free to address the committee.
Hello. I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, I would just like to ask, actually ask Yvonne Medias a question. I, uh, have a son who was in the sub-separate classroom at Studley last year, and he is moving on to Coelho. Um, and he's going to be in that sub-separate classroom again. But he is, on his IEP, it states that he should be going into the inclusion classroom for math and ELA. So I want to know if instead of that, he will just stay with his sub-separate classroom for all of his subjects, so we're not, like, intermingling him between the classes? Or if there will still be some kind of plan for him to go in those inclusion classes with a para?
Uh, so hi, good evening. So there, we are working on a plan, um, for those students, um, in our programs, the kinds of partial inclusion placements where they go into general education and what that would look like. The majority of those students would be in a hybrid model. They would be in either Cohort A or Cohort B with the option of, um, depending on the program and the student's IEP needs, receiving on the remote days some in-person services as well.
Okay, so it's not, we're not really sure until you look at each individualized student to see which, which cohort would be better for them?
Correct. And the SSC at Studley and Coelho, those programs would be prioritized, uh, for on remote days for some possible hybrid services, depending on the student's IEP.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is David White from twenty-five Russo Drive. Would like to address the committee.
Thank you. Welcome. Please feel free to address the committee.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for taking my, uh, comment. I'm just disappointed that, um, certain members kind of bullied others into changing their vote just by throwing the sports, um, topic out. Um, I am glad at least that we're at the hybrid level. Um, I know we would not be sending our student back full-time if it was full classrooms just because, even if it is feasible, I don't think it's, uh, safe. Um, children, especially the younger grades, are going to have trouble with keeping their masks on and following the protocols as it is. Um, but I was very disappointed in how, um, certain people, um, basically bullied other members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, uh, individuals who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, there's a Robert Burnett from one, uh, three forty-nine Central Street in Mansfield.
Well, Mr. Burnett, please feel free to address the committee.
Thank you for taking my, uh, my comment here. My son will be starting kindergarten, uh, here hopefully with you guys shortly. Um, most of my questions were answered here in, in the lengthy debate, and I thank all members for the participating in what has been a long meeting. Uh, I guess my, my parting comment here would be that I think we, uh, we had a good opportunity here to provide the parents the choice between whether they needed to address some of the concerns that were highlighted regarding socioeconomic, uh, situations and their ability to provide adequate education at home, or whether they needed the district so that they could go collect a paycheck and, and support their families, uh, whereby you guys have provided the opportunity, regardless of how your vote had turned out, to, uh, to do remote learning. Um, so I, I'm disappointed to see that we did not put that, that situation where it was in the hands of the parents. Um, and I, uh, I think that's kind of it. Thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Um, Chairman Withers, uh, David Quinn from, he's on the page, I'm sorry. Would like to address the council.
Mr. Quinn, please feel free to address the committee.
Good evening, Chairman Withers, uh, honorable members of the body, uh, Superintendent Sawyer, Assistant Superintendent Regan. Um, thank you very much for this deliberative debate. Uh, the immense decision before you, uh, I know was not entered into lightly, and I know that the, uh, amount of effort that was put into both the preparation for this meeting and then the debate that came afterwards, um, was, was both substantive and relative. Uh, and I have every confidence that the administration will, will carry out what's in the best interest of the students. And I know that our, our high-quality staff, um, will do the same in no matter what environment we ultimately end up in. Um, I did have one point of clarification. Um, it just broke that Mansfield Public Schools has opted into a remote start, and given that, uh, they are a member of the HACAMAC, and that sports seem to be a determining factor in the vote, I just wanted to raise it to the committee, considering that that seemed to be a substantive portion of the committee's ultimate vote, and thought you should be aware of it. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the effort that's gone into the planning. Um, you've done a, an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is Laura Almeda of eighty-two Hemlock Drive. Would like to address the council. I'm sorry, committee.
Hello, Ms. Almeda. Please address the committee.
Hello, thank you. I want to first acknowledge, I understand how hard everyone has worked and engaged in all of the discussions that were generally really respectful, so that's really appreciated. What I just wanted to say, because I doubt this will be the last time this, um, everyone sits around and has to vote, is that I was disappointed in those that did not vote for minimally a hybrid version, um, because essentially what you did is made the choice for us. And as parents, we deserve the right to make that choice, and there's a lot of factors to consider. So I just wanted to outline that the school's been very clear that anyone has the option to do virtual. And so minimally providing parents the choice to make what's in the best interest for their child and their family is really what, you know, making a decision for all community members is about. So I would just ask for those that maybe vote that way to reconsider voting more based upon what would allow the most choices for all community members versus what might be personally your belief and/or what you think should happen. But thank you all for your time and dedication to everything that we all know is happening, and, um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is Laura Dolan from twenty-nine Erica Way. Would like to address the committee.
Hello, Ms. Dolan. Please feel free to address the committee.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Um, I realize it's late. Um, I'm, I'm extremely disappointed in the decision as far as, um, the complete remote learning. I was told, I asked specifically some school community members if your child would be penalized for remote only, and they said absolutely not. Well, considering it's almost like a different school where you're going to be segregated from any other children that you normally go to school with, uh, that's not, that's not right. I mean, my son's in a CTE program, and nobody had any answers on CTE. Um, so, you know, when, when you're talking about it almost being a different school, that, that's being penalized. And, you know, when you change your vote because of after-school activities and sports, that's disappointing. So, you know, I, I, I just feel like, you know, that we didn't have any answers on CTE and the fact that you're going to completely segregate the kids that choose not to go to school and risk the health and safety of everybody, that, that's not the right way to go. And it's extremely disappointing, and I'm, and I'm extremely upset about it. And I just wanted to be heard on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolan.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is David Neil Bowey.
Um.
Good, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to take the opposite of, um, extremely disappointed. I think it was a, um, no-win situation in anything that you guys, uh, picked. I think giving everybody, uh, the, the best was to kind of split it in half and to do both and let, uh, any parent do what they think is in the best interest of their child. It's not just the health of a child with COVID. We've got, uh, you know, the social aspect of, aspect of it, some by not going to school at all. So, uh, you know, we're, we're playing all the, that we can. I think everybody that's felt one way or another cares about their children, just like everybody else does, just like all of you do. I think that, uh, I agree with Mr. Withers too. Um, sports was just brought up as sports, but I think it should have better, have been said better by saying extracurricular. And extracurricular activities is a huge part of any child's well-being and what they do, what they choose to do, who they get to see, whether you're good at it, whether you're not good at it, whether you love. That's part of who they are and who they'll become. And I hope that we keep on going and not steal the youth from our youth. And we do the best that we can, and as we get more information, it's fluid. Obviously, we still have weeks to go before school starts, that we continue to just monitor and make the best decisions. And I applaud you guys because, uh, you know, I don't always agree with all of you with everything you do, but I know one thing. I can see it in your faces that everybody has worked extremely hard, and it's emotional for all of you, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is a Diana Lynn Secchio. She is from forty-five Taunton Road. She would like to address the committee.
Good evening. Please feel free to address the committee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for, um, for really opening up discussions a, among the committee and, um, you know, kind of hashing it out in an open forum such as this, and, and in, in live, uh, view of anyone, you know, that could attend from the community. Um, I think this has been hard on everyone, just from, um, you know, personal as well as professional, as a community, um, as a state and as a country. So, um, I think it, it just kind of all brought that together. Um, my questions are really around the learning platforms and, and what the plan is for the hybrid or remote. Um, you know, I, I, my concern is children falling behind or not having the same curriculum, um, and learning plans as those that are doing hybrid. Um, should the choice be that, you know, the parents want them to go fully remote? Um, would there be supplemental, uh, learning that would be provisioned for students if the parents, you know, request that? Is there, uh, plans to put some extra measures in place if parents and teachers feel that maybe the students are falling behind? Um, you know, my concern is I don't want my child, you know, because we have to make a decision based on, uh, health factors and other reasons, um, where they'd have to go remote, uh, that they would be left behind because of the fact that, you know, we have to make that decision.
Yeah, um, thank you. Um, in planning for the remote, the full remote learning option, um, we're looking at all of the courses that are assigned to our learning management system right now, and will be closely aligning the courses that are in that system to our current courses that we have right now. So the next step, now that we know that, um, we will definitely be in a hybrid mode and planning for the virtual academy with the learning management system that we know now that we're going with, we'll be able to plan for that, um, in more detail.
And if we need to, um, address, you know, our concerns at a separate, will that be addressed at a separate meeting as far as, um, once the plans have been rolled out? Will there be enough time to do that before the start of school?
Yes. So once we make, um, our second submission to the state, which is actually on Monday, the tenth, we'll have, uh, more detail around the actual virtual academy, and then we'll continue to work on that from now up until the start of school. So we'll have it done, have it done, but well before school starts, um, and be able to provide every, all of the families with that information.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more question. I know there was some, uh, some discussion regarding, um, socioeconomic issues, um, you know, as far as, uh, you know, providing students, you know, that don't receive normal meals, um, other than within the school, um, school day, and then, uh, you know, that there's a possibility that that, that could, uh, be a problem. Um, are we, i- is the, the city looking at, uh, creating some type of community involvement to assist and help with the program to be able to supplement, um, in that area? So for, you know, if, if there are issues with, with deliveries or, um, getting, you know, students to have, um, the meals that they would normally get, um, in the schools themselves, um, are we looking at programs to be able to assist that would also allow for the community to, to, um, to help out?
Um, we did deliver meals to families who indicated they needed the meals delivered in the spring. So again, if we go to a, a community feeding program, get approved by the federal government, uh, we would do the same thing if that, uh, became overwhelming, uh, for our systems. Uh, you know, we would certainly, uh, look for, for other ways to get that done, yes.
Is that something that would be, um, open to the community as a whole, or would that just be within the administration itself?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
For those, uh, for those of us in the community that would be willing to assist with that in, in one way or another, would that be something that, that could be opened up to the community?
Um, someone would have to coordinate that. There'd be a, you know, uh, some need to make sure people understood, you know, times and locations. Uh, so, uh, someone would have to coordinate it. Wouldn't be just kind of, um, show up and, and do something, but, uh, yeah, uh, you know, it would be a community-wide effort for, we have, we have agencies right now that, uh, are doing that this summer. So we would probably rely on them to coordinate the effort.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is Lucy Pacheco from fifteen Urch Street. Would like to address the committee.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Pacheco. Please feel free to address the committee. Ms. Pacheco?
We can reach Ms. Pacheco.
Okay.
Uh, and we have a, uh, Joe Emerald, who's the ABA president. Would like to address the committee.
Hello, Mr. Emerald. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman Withers, uh, honorable member. I'm sorry, did you hear, hear me?
You can't again. We lost you for a bit, but you're back.
Okay. Um, I have two questions. My first question is concerning, uh, the motion to reconsider, um, the high school remote versus hybrid vote, and I'm wondering if it was in order. Uh, my understanding of a motion to reconsider is that it must be made by a member, a, a voting member of the side that passed. Was, was that motion in order?
I, I believe so maybe. I'll have to look back and see who made the most, Mr. Emerald, I'm not, I'm, I believe it was in order, but I will, uh, we certainly can look into it.
Thank you. And my second question is, can the hybrid schedule actually be staffed?
I believe that's the administration.
Thank you.
Uh, the administration obviously is not aware of any reason to believe that it can't be staffed.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
I'm going to now return to Lucy Pacheco from 15 Urch Street.
Ms. Pacheco, please feel free to address the committee.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, sorry about that, user error. Um, thank you for your time, um, and, uh, deliberation. I know this was difficult for everybody. I guess I just wanted some clarification on the, um, I know that the full, um, remote learning is going to be different than the hybrid. And I guess curriculum-wise, I wanted some, um, some more information on that before making a final decision. Um, it sounds like you probably don't have that right at this moment, but will that be addressed soon? Or when can we look forward to, to, to more specific information about the differences?
We're, uh, we're in the process of, um, purchasing all the site licenses right now for the actual, um, platform. And then, once we do that, we'll be able to, um, share all the information with families so that they'll be able to make an informed decision.
Okay, and, and when, when do you need our decision by?
Um, we don't have a deadline yet, but we will be, we will be setting a deadline too.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is a Todd Cobus from 189 Urch Street. Would like to address the committee.
Hello, Mr. Cobus.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for, for your votes and, and your consideration tonight. I just wanted to mention that I am supportive of the decision for the, the hybrid model, especially for K through eight. Um, but one of the things I wanted to mention, and I know Laura Dolan brought it up, is that it appears that, that students that, that sign up for the ABA and opt to, to be 100% remote are, are going to be penalized a little bit. And I was wondering if the, the plans for the ABA are finalized or if, if there are changes that can be made so that they're included a little bit more and it's so that they have the, the same opportunities that, that the other kids have? Is that, is that cast in stone yet?
Oh, no, I mean, these are still, uh, active plans, but I, I'm not aware of, um, how, how anyone's being penalized. I, I want to clarify that the, the need for a remote option exists because we know we have students who cannot return to school. Um, not that they don't want to, but they cannot. And so, we have a responsibility to educate them and to provide them an option. So, that option is geared for them and they are not going to return to school. So, that's why that program is designed as one for students who don't intend to come back in person. Um, and we can't, we don't have the means or the resources to run two different schools, um, which is why that, um, that option is going to be, uh, different from what we're doing with the teachers, um, through, you know, the continuum of models based on the, the, the conditions. Um, we can't, uh, we don't have enough teachers to, to run, um, a full school program for students in that, in that program. And so, that's why we need to learn on, lean on a, um, a learning system that's virtual, that's designed for this kind of work, and then staff it with teachers to facilitate the learning and support students as they move through a self-paced, um, personalized experience, uh, which is different from the classroom experience that kids get, uh, in school. And that's, uh, but again, by virtue of the, the fact that that, that program is being set up for the kids who don't intend to come back. And so, we're offering that, which, by the way, the state does not require that we do that. Right, so, if we wanted to, we could only offer that opportunity for students who cannot come back. And we're saying, no, no, we have to do this anyways. Why wouldn't we make this available to people who want that instead? Um, but, uh, in doing that, we're creating a situation where we're basically running, uh, fundamentally two districts. And so, um, based on the resources that we have, we have to, we have to handle that one in a different way. Now, we're going to ensure that the educational quality of that experience is equal. It's just it's going to be very, very different in, um, how it's operating. So, that's why we really don't, you know, recommend that people going in thinking that they're going to go in and, you know, well, you know, we'll do this for a couple of weeks and then see how things go and then jump back into the other one. Because, um, the, the pacing and, uh, the way the curriculum is organized is just different. So, I don't think it's anyone's being penalized. It's just we have to be honest so people can make the decision and understand that these are, these are two different silos. They're not part of that continuum that the others are. I don't, I don't know if that helps.
That does, but it sounds like there, there won't be any opportunity for any sort of crossover even on the, the remote days. They're, they're very much two different silos. Um,
They, they are two silos because, uh, teachers have, uh, you know, class, you know, you know, a, a class assignment with students in them. And we have to organize around that. And so, it, the kids that are coming into the continuum experience, you know, w- will be moving from remote to hybrid to in-person hopefully someday, right? So, those groups, those students are going to move with their teachers in and out of those experiences. The, the curriculum won't change. The teacher just has to teach it differently based on the conditions. Whereas, the students in the full remote, they're in remote every day no matter what, and that's the plan for the year for them. Um, so, you know, you, the, the two groups do not mix.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, there's Lisa Fisher from 20 Clinton Avenue. Would like to address the committee.
Thank you. Good evening, please.
Um, next is Jennifer Alderson of 20 Ritchie Road.
Hello, Ms. Alderson, please feel free to address the committee.
Hi, uh, can, can you hear me?
Can, yes. He's good.
I keep getting, I keep getting muted.
You're back.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, first of all, um, for your time on this topic. Um, my questions, um, my question is whether this resolution of a hybrid mode is official at this time? Or is approval ultimately needed on the submission going out on the 10th? And if so, when is this approval expected? Because, uh, in my household, we're debating whether to pull our two children out of the public schools as a contingency, but this isn't something that you could do last minute. And so, i- i- is this vote tonight final? Or do we need higher-up approval for all three plans that we're submitting?
So, so the vote, vote tonight to go hybrid is, is binding and final as our plan as of today. Now, I say as of today because it's five or six weeks before school starts, so there obviously could be changes, uh, with this virus that require us to come back and rethink what we're deciding today, which would be, you know, a big spike or, you know, something like that. But as of, the state doesn't have to approve our decision to, to go hybrid. And so, the decision to go hybrid is, is final as of now with that caveat that, you know, if things on the ground change, five, six weeks is a long time in this virus, so we may have to rethink it. But that, that is the plan as of now.
Okay, understood, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, this is Annabella Lewis. I don't have her address yet.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Lewis, please feel free to address the committee.
Hi, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Begin.
Hi, so, uh, I'm a mother of two children with special needs. Um, one of them having, uh, very complex medical health issues and my son who's on the spectrum. Both kids are going into high school. I have strong concerns around the virtual learning, especially for my son, um, and what it's going to look like in the fall. Um, I went into a start of summer where I'm thinking, you know what? They're going to have to go remotely because of my daughter. But now, I'm having second thoughts on it because of my son. I don't see how virtual, the virtual learning platform is going to work for him, especially since he's on the spectrum. But again, I still have strong concerns, um, due to my daughter. So, it's kind of like a, a catch-22 for me. I'm damned if I, I do and damned if I don't. Also, um, I was told today by my daughter's doctor that, you know, if she does go back to school, he recommends six feet apart, not three feet apart. And you guys are saying, well, you know, the three feet apart would work. But in reality, for kids like my daughter, it wouldn't. So, like I said, I, I do have strong concerns. And also, I, I do want to thank the school committee for doing their part and, you know, helping us out in administration. However, um, I'm, I am disappointed on the second cast. Uh, I feel like that certain, um, committee members kind of, like someone said, bullied the other ones. So, it's, 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 you know, kind of, you know, shame on them. So, it's basically it. But thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I do think it, as you said, it being binding, it's important that before the meeting, um, adjourns for tonight, that we get clarity on whether or not it was a, um, a valid motion.
And so, I, I, when open forum is over, I'm going to, um, just because of the significance of this vote and all the time everyone's put into it. And I'm not sure who made the motion. I'm going to, uh, ask for a, uh, another motion to reconsider, um, and make sure that it's all done with the I's dotted and T's crossed. Because I, I, I don't want into a situation where, you know, this committee spent four and a half, five hours here and I, and spent a lot, even more time working on this. And then, um, because of, of something trivial like that, um, it was called into question. So, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that the, um, it's done by the letter of the, the letter of the rules.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't characterize it as trivial, just, you know, it is the rules and they're important as as we run it by. So, uh, um, but yeah, so good, I'm glad we'll work it to the bottom of that.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
Chairman Withers, um, we do have a technical issue with Lisa Fisher. She has asked you to give her, uh, question.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Sure.
So, this is from Lisa Fisher from 20 Clinton Avenue. Her question is, I have one child going to kindergarten and one going into second grade. Both are terrified to attend school with fears that they catch the virus and pass to their grandparents, grandmother. It is my understanding that if they, you know, that they do remote learning, that a home inspection is required and if things change with the virus, where a normal, where, where normalcy of school attendance can be done, that neither the child will be able to attend the box.
So, uh, yeah, no, um, no home inspection is required. And, um, if they do choose to go to the outer row, remote academy, um, they will be able to, um, to re-enter the traditional schooling model. And if there are spaces that hold robots, that's where they'll be put. But, um, so, I, I think the answer to, I think she was, um, mistaken.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum?
There are no other presidents, um, listed to the speaker house.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll close open forum. Um, just as had been said before, uh, there was a motion to reconsider the vote on the high school that was made. It is required to be made by someone on the prevailing, uh, prevailing side. Um, I'm not sure who made the motion. I, I don't want to, you know, we'll have to go back and watch it. But just out of an abundance of caution, uh, realizing the, you know, gravity of this, uh, decision and what has been done tonight, um, I do want to just make sure, um, that everything was done correctly so it can't be questioned. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to reconsider, uh, the vote on the high school going remote.
Chairman.
Second.
Shannon.
Shannon, make the motion.
Ms. Johnson.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gaddis.
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
So, we have, uh, motion to go hybrid at the high school. Uh, um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Johnson.
Uh, excuse me. I'm sorry, no.
What?
Just a question.
What?
Because before we start the vote. So, just to clarify, now that the reconsideration is passed, the motion is to approve whether or not the high school goes to
Go hybrid.
Goes hybrid.
Hybrid.
And the reason I ask that is because for K through four and the middle school, we started with
Person.
In-person. And I think that's where the confusion might have been
Sure.
with how this, with how this happened.
Right, and so, and so the reason
Because we
I think there was some confusion on the first vote.
Right.
And, uh, you know, that's my fault is doing, that's doing the vote. My, the reason I'm skipping in-person with restrictions for the high school is because the administration has said it's not feasible for us to be able to do so.
Right, I, I don't, I, I think that's more of what the confusion was, not so much about sports. And this is as a person who thinks we should be remote. So, I, I just, that's, I just wanted to make that as a comment.
I just want to say, I, I think I was the one that made the motion. Uh, and I was not on the prevailing side, so I apologize about that. Uh, we don't do a lot of motions to reconsider, uh, in this committee, so, um, yeah, I, I don't think it's ever happened, so I apologize for that. So, but I am glad, thank you, Mr. Amro, so that we're, um, doing this the right way.
Mr. Larson.
Right, just before we start. So, the motion to approve going hybrid at the Ever High School was made by?
Shannon.
Shannon.
Seconded by Rob.
So, same as the vote to reconsider. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Gaddis.
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for, uh, humorin' me there with making sure that we get that right. As Mr. Storrs said, it's a little bit more in the weeds than we usually, usually get.
Sure.
Um, is there any other issues to be brought before the committee? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Withers, yes. Mr. Gaddis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.